All right, we are going to get our meeting started. Madam Clerk, if we can begin with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Capriello, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, and Councilmember Jean, Council, excuse me, Council President Brandal.
Here. All right, we're going to begin our morning with prayer, and Councilman Quintero is going to open us in prayer, and then we're going to stand, we're going to stand for the prayer, and then salute the flag.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Heavenly Father, I know you're up there listening, and good morning Fresno, you look great today in black and white, and pink, and orange. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for bringing us together today, and we ask your guidance to make Fresno a better community. We especially thank you for an exciting World Series. Unfortunately, Councilmember Baines's business couldn't afford a T-shirt for each of us that say Giants, but that's okay, we'll wait. Today, Heavenly Father, my colleagues and I would like to take time and thank a certain group of individuals in our city, of Fresno community, that work tirelessly to make Fresno a better place and make our council jobs easier. Although many, all of our employees are very important to us, we particularly would like to acknowledge our Assistant Chiefs of Staff, our council assistants, and the assistants in the Mayor and City Manager's Office. You all make our jobs easier. Also, I want to particularly, we want to particularly thank our legal and executive assistants, our city clerk assistants, administrative assistants, customer service clerks, secretaries, inspectors, analysts, call center representatives, staff assistants, and water conservation reps, all of our blue collar employees that take care of the trees, our potholes, sidewalks, our facilities, and our parks. We don't take enough time to thank them enough, and myself and my colleagues would really like to thank them publicly. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us in our cities. Can I get an amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Yeah, we're right on top of this. We have no ceremonial presentations today, so we're on to the approval of city council minutes from October 23rd of this year. Madam Clerk, were there any changes to those minutes?
Changes.
Then do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, those minutes are approved. Now we're on to council reports and comments, and Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to...
I said Quintero, I'm sorry. You're right, you're up.
I can be so. With his Arctic blonde here. Anyway, I just wanted to relate to everyone that, you know Fresno really, really has a long baseball tradition of winning. It has started in 2008 with the Fresno State Bulldogs, right Steve? NC-28, national champions, and then we, even number years seemed to be good for Fresno and the Giants and other teams. So that was '08, '010 Giants, '12 Giants, '14 Giants. So you have to remember that to be a world champion team, you need your farm, schedule your farm teams, and the AAA team is right here in Fresno. And so a lot of those players, a lot of those players came right through Fresno to get to the big leagues and to be world champions. So congratulations to the Giants, thank my colleagues for celebrating this moment, and I'd like to encourage the Astros, the Grizzly slash Astros, to keep this tradition going. So we're going to expect a world championship in '16, '18, and 2020. So go Astros, congratulations Giants, thank you.
Councilman Brand.
This weekend, District 6 wrapped in a two-cities marathon, which will be a half marathon and a full marathon, and Fresno will be outlined all the routes at times, so people going to church and other destinations can find the proper route. And this year, we're going to invite council members to participate, and the winner will be the council president for life.
Wow. I don't know if you'll get any participation then. All right, screen is clear. Now we're on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
One change, the 1:30 PM workshop has been continued to November 20th, 2014, at 11:40 AM.
Hey, thank you. So the 1:30 item was a workshop with Clovis Unified, and that's going to come at another date, so that's not going to be this afternoon. So do I have a motion to approve today's agenda with those changes? Oh, Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. I need to make a change for, on the RDA portion of the agenda. I need to move item 14-533 above item 14-524. So I need to, I need to reverse the order of how they come.
All right. Okay, with those two changes then, the RDA change and the afternoon meeting change, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second? All right, all in favor? Aye. Today's agenda's been approved. We're on to consent calendar, and I'd like to ask council if there's any items that they would like to pull or for discussion? All right, if not then, I'd like to pull item 1H. That's about in agreement with the landfill in Fresno County. So with that one item pulled, with that, with that one item pulled, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, excuse me, you're right. I'm going to go out to the public and ask if there's any members of the public that would like to address any of the items specifically on consent calendar. If so, you can just come up and approach the microphone. Yes, sir.
President, would this be the time for contested consent comment?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
No.
Wait until contested consent.
And so are you clear that the only thing that's going to be contested is 1H? That'll be the only item at that point?
Yes, I'm looking at 2B, and it's under the consent, but it's under the contested consent calendar, so I wanted to be clear.
Oh, no, the, 2, so 2B is actually under general admin?
Very good.
Yeah, okay, and you'll have plenty of opportunity. All right, so the only item pulled off of consent was 1H, and it doesn't look like any members of the public want to talk about consent items, so do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, now on to item 1H as contested consent. I just wanted to discuss this for a few minutes. I think, Bruce, you can probably help me with it. So can you kind of lay out what's happened here?
I'm looking over staff. There you are. Staff can fill in the blanks, anything I missed. As you council knows, our contract with the county of Fresno for the American landfill expired in July. Previous expiration of this contract, the county and the city of Fresno hired F&amp;H Bob Hilton as a consultant to go in and look at the financials, look at future closure costs, what the actual operating costs are, depreciation, everything else that you look at when you're looking at rate structures. We also looked at some things regarding the amount of material that's being delivered, some opportunities that the county could take advantage of to reduce the cost, which then again would help us, because I think we're about 85% of the material that goes to Fresno County. We also looked at other sites during that time in which there might be some other opportunities. There is a landfill that is a little bit further away from us that's in Madera, but quite frankly, it only has about six to seven years of capacity based on the amount of tonnage that we generate. To make a long story short, after months of negotiations, our tipping rate currently is about $23 a ton, or it is $23 a ton, we were able to successfully negotiate a new tipping rate of $1,850 a ton. There is an annual escalator of 2.5% that comes with this contract, it's a 20-year deal. The first increase doesn't occur until July 1st of 2016. The council's approval of this agreement will provide some long-term stability as far as where we take our solid waste materials, as well as the cost of taking that material. And more importantly, it will generate, at least in the first year, almost a million dollars in savings to the ratepayers. So we believe that given the stability from a financial standpoint, and from a long, having a long-term partnership with the county as far as where we can take our solid waste material, that we believe that this is a good rate, and we've talked to a number of people, and some of them are actually here in the audience, who believe this is a great rate. And I wanted to add that this rate not only applies to the city of Fresno, but our franchise haulers as well, because it's material that is being generated by the city of Fresno. So with that, council, we would request your support and approval for staff's recommendation.
Well, I met with Tommy and Jerry the other day, and it was a great meeting, and you guys might be able to help me. I didn't bring up the chart that you had, you left with me, but I remember that our tipping fees that we're about to pay under this new contract is $1,850 a ton. And is that, but it's based upon how many tons the city brings to the facility, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And then, so Jerry, how, are we bringing enough tons to get that $1,850 rate?
Yes, we are.
We are, so currently, I mean, from day one, that's the rate we'll be getting?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have...
We have a range, each, each rate is based on a tier, and we're within the tier.
And are we right on the cusp, could we easily find ourselves paying a higher rate if, if we weren't paying attention?
If we, if tonnage has dropped off, or there was something that happened, we could see a reduction in tonnages, but with that, you have to, you have to consider the fact that we're taking less tons. We would be paying a slightly higher rate, but we would also be paying for less tonnage. So in the long run, sometimes it just balances out.
Right, and, and when we enter into this contract, we're also helping the other communities that participate at American, is that right?
Our rates definitely help them, and we're going to be meeting with the other stakeholders in the area, as well as the county, to indicate what we've done as far as our deal is concerned.
Do you know some of the other cities that also use American landfill in Fresno County?
Well, Kermin uses them, you have Sanger and Selma, and some of the other towns that are in the area that will transport material out to them. Madera doesn't, but they're not in Fresno County, they use their facility, so.
And so through this process, we, we hired, we were hired with Fresno County, a third party to really analyze the project, right?
Correct.
And how much did that cost us again?
It cost the city, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was $74,000, what?
It was about, I believe it was about $75,000, which we split between the two of us.
Okay, so we split it with the county, so we're somewhere around $35,000. And do you think that that, that study was beneficial, and did that help the city in this negotiation?
Absolutely.
Like, in what way?
Well, by being able to open up the entire book on the Fresno County landfill, we were able to look at, at everything that they had been doing there prior, and what we could do to suggest operational changes that would actually reduce costs. So I think it was a dramatic help.
Money well spent, you'd say?
I would say yes.
Okay, and then in that process, did we get a chance to check, you know, what other facilities would charge the city of Fresno if we took our wasteful...
We actually started that process with a study of all the landfills in the area, and what their gate rate was, as well as we, we had our contractor go out and ask specifics about what, what tonnage capacity they were capable of taking, because even if somebody's gate rate can be a little bit lower, you have out-of-county fees, so you have transport fees, which, which dramatically change based on how far away they are, and then you also have capacity, can they take us for the next 20 years? So all in all, this was, this was by far the giant of the deal.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. We pay, in those tipping fees, I think we pay a county charge, is that right?
$3.41 a ton.
And so what does that actually cover? What, what is that for?
That covers our AB 939 requirements, which is the 50% reduction to landfills by the year 2000. There's, there's state requirements within that, there's a household hazardous waste element, they actually provide household hazardous waste services at American Avenue, and then they also do inspections of all of the facilities that deliver material to American, or that produce some sort of waste in town as far as transport. They do the inspections of that through their health department.
So, so that fee sounds like some pretty important things in there. I was wondering if there was, I just never really knew what that fee was about, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
I guess, so just to reiterate, we'll, from day one, we'll start, we'll be paying $1,850, which is a reduction from what we're currently paying, which is fantastic.
Absolutely.
And we're well within the range, we should be able to make that $1,850 price based on the amount of material we take to the waste.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's good news. The last thing that I wanted to reiterate is that the city of Fresno loves to be good neighbors, and by us entering into this contract, we are actually keeping the price down for all of the other communities that help, that take product to American in Fresno County. So, all right, thank you, Jerry, and thank you, Bruce. Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. You actually asked two of the questions that I needed answered, so thank you for that dialogue.
All right, Councilman Brand.
So Jerry, this is a, is a 20-year contract, what's the length of the contract?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, 20 years. And in Madera, even though they offered attractive rates, correct me if I'm wrong, they did not have the ability to go beyond so many years because they had reached their capacity in their landfill?
Current capacity for the landfill, by our estimates, would be about seven years. We would, we would actually fill them.
And yeah, the additional, every mile you drive is a cost, right, from labor, fuel, maintenance, so shorter drive in the long...
American is by far the shortest, and it's still within Fresno County, whereas every other landfill is not.
Okay, so this drops our rate about, roughly about 20%, and I believe in March 15th, we, the contract expires on the recycling, correct?
That's correct. We have a contract with Sunset that expires on March 15th, and then we also have...
Green waste?
We have some other contracts within the transport that expire.
And I know there's a lot of people that feel we can do better on the recycling, substantially better. So I'm asking then, in, with the combination of the decrease in landfill cost, hopefully some significant decreases in recycling, and perhaps green waste, this should all move in the direction to keep downward pressure on the rates, correct?
That is correct, sir, and that is our overall goal.
And I know you guys are working on some solutions on the task system too, so maybe collectively, we'll hopefully, for consumers and ratepayers, I'm assuming that'll be sometime next year, as far as looking at that, that maybe there's not even a rate increase at all, hopefully.
That's, that's our hope, and, and we've been working close with the labor organizations as well, and, and in the last contract, they actually did release task, it is no longer part of that contract, so they've, they've kind of stepped up to help us get to where we need to get.
Okay, thank you guys, the entire team, for your efforts on this, and has anybody made a motion yet?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. Jerry, I have one more question, no, I forgot to ask, it's important to me. Is the, so explain to me the review process, I mean, this is a 20-year contract.
It's a 20-year contract.
What I don't want to see happen, and I think my colleagues agree, is us to enter into a long contract and then kind of lose track of it and find out, you know, that it wasn't as effective as we wanted it to be. So tell me about the review process for this contract.
Within the 20-year contract, there's a review section for operations and expenses for a five-year window, so every five years, we will actually sit back down with the county, go over the expenses and the operational costs, and make sure that they're meeting their, their needs for closure and post-closure, as well as that our rates are in line with those needs.
And at those times, is that opportunity to change, change the contract, is that what you're saying?
There's always an opportunity to change the contract.
At that review, okay.
Yeah. If there, for some reason that they were making well over, once the flow control is under, under control, and they're bringing more material to their location, we may be at, we may be in a different place in five years.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jerry.
Sure.
Great report.
If I could, let me add to that, because as, as part of the negotiations with the county, and this will ultimately be up to the board supervisors, we pointed out to them that under their current franchise agreements, they do not require their franchisees to go to American landfill. And we emphasize that in order for them to reach the rate that we've negotiated, that that is something they're going to have to do. Now whether they choose to do it is yet to be seen, but our rate and this tiered rate is built on an assumption that the board supervisors in the county will ultimately, when these new, when these franchise agreements that they have are renewed, that that provision will be included, that all the material that is generated in Fresno County will be sent to American landfill, which then allocates that cost over a larger amount. So we may find out five years from now, as a result of that effort, that more material is coming in than they anticipated, and therefore there would be an opportunity to reduce our costs even further. But at this point, the rate that we are adopting, or you will be adopting, assumes that they will go forward with that in the future.
So is the rate that the city of Fresno pays based on the tonnage that we take them?
Yes.
Or everybody collectively?
We take them.
Okay, so our rate is secured as long as we meet the tonnage that we take them?
Yes.
But we are saying, for the overall health of the plant, that we're going to ask the county to, to make sure that the other communities take as the max possible?
The way this rate works is that they will have to, for, for them to make up the difference, they will have to include a flow control provision in their franchise agreements when they, they come up for renewal.
All right, cool, thank you. Thanks, Jerry.
That's right.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, the screen is clear. You know, I, I think I should ask, any members of the public like to address this item? Good morning.
You're always forgetting something, you the president.
I pulled it off at the last second.
That's why I'm here today. Bruce, I'm glad to see everybody up here, and you too. And he's right, we got to involve the county with anything that we do. Only thing we have with you guys is the profit sharing agreement, anytime we get out of their fear of influence, that master settlement agreement, that general plan, we got to go to them because we all together. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Good to see you again. Any other members of the public like to address this item?
Good morning, council, administration, Richard Caglia, Cedar Avenue Recycling and Transfer Station. We are the ones that have been handling your trash going to the American Avenue landfill for quite a number of years, and we look forward to that same relationship going forward. I will attest to you that you did get a good rate, good job. We look forward to working with you as your solid waste needs evolve in the next several months. There's a lot at play, there's a lot at stake, there's a few players in town that want a little piece of the pie, and we appreciate working with you, and we look forward to a continued relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
And we can't beat a better relationship than these fellows here, this guy here, and his loyalty.
All right. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right, the screen is clear, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. All right, thank you. That is it for contested consent, and we're now on to general admin. Our first item is 2A, that's a resolution for the substantial amendment number 2012-002, and that is from our Department of Planning.
Good morning, Jennifer Clark, Director of Development and Resource Management. This morning, I am here to present a substantial amendment to the 2012, 2013, and 2014 annual action plans regarding the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. So I wanted to give you a little bit of history and background on the program, what it's used for, and then what we are changing. So the Emergency Solutions Grant was previously known as the Emergency Shelter Grant. 2010, the program was overhauled through the Hearth Act, and it really refocused the program on solutions to long-term remediation and assistance for persons who are experiencing homelessness, not just shelter and short-term solutions. So there was a new focus of the program, and it really kind of changed the way we allocate funds and we look at funds. In 2011, the council adopted a substantial amendment at that time to change our program guidelines and our policies and procedures to fit with the new program. So really, we wanted to refocus on services, wraparound services, long-term solutions, rather than strictly prevention and shelter. So how does the new program work? So many of the categories are the same, however, some of them are now capped at the amount of funding that the city can apply to those types of activities. Street outreach and shelter combined cannot exceed 60% of our total allocation. There are still funding, are still funding categories available for prevention, rapid rehousing, our data collection, which is our HMIS system, as well as administration. So how do we go about determining what we should spend our funding on? The Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care is a group of agencies that are committed to serving the homeless population, committed to finding solutions to homelessness, and work together in an integrated way to ensure that there's not a duplication of services and not a gap of services. They, there are over 30 agencies that are members of this continuum, and they meet monthly to really discuss all of their activities, they have subcommittees, and they work diligently within our community and within Madera County to ensure that we are really addressing some of the, the issues related to homelessness in our community. So one of the requirements of the program is not only that we consult with the continuum, but that we really work with them as a partner to allocate the funds, to determine if the activities are in compliance with the Hearth Act, and then to provide support with our subrecipient agencies. So our initial consultation was back in August of this year, on August 14th, we went to the continuum and asked for some input on a work plan. Here's the direction that we'd like to go, we received quite a bit of input, I'll talk about that in a minute, and then we produced a draft document, a draft amendment to our plan, which was out on the streets for 30 days. We received some initial feedback, which was incorporated in the draft document. We returned for additional consultation on October 9th to go back over some of those changes, to get additional feedback, which was incorporated in the draft. So let's talk a little bit about what their comments were. So one of their, probably the largest comment that was received, and highest priority for me, was the allocation of the funds in a timely manner, so that, so that these subrecipients can actually provide the services in a continuing, continued manner, rather than a stop-and-start way that we had been allocating the funds. So we were behind in our allocations, we were behind in our contracts with the agencies, and the continuum really cautioned the city that we needed to do a better job of effectively getting the monies out on the street, getting it to the right agencies, doing the right activities, so that we could get the best benefit for our community. Additionally, there was great concern about the match requirements. There's a significant match that's required for emergency solutions grant funds, it's a one-for-one match, we have always passed that down to our subrecipients. They expressed concern that it was really hard for them to be able to serve the populations that they were serving and identify that match. So one of the things that the city will, will be addressing in, over the next coming years, is how do we reduce that match requirement? What are things that we're doing as a city right now that can be counted toward that match? Whether it's our homeless outreach team, or if it's... Whether it's our homeless outreach team, or if it's any activities that we're doing in-house that can be counted as matched, so it would reduce some of their requirements, so that they can actually get out and serve more people. There was also a request to consider more funds for street outreach through our 25-Cities Initiative, which as you recall is the national initiative to end veteran and chronic homelessness by the end of 2015. That initiative has caused these agencies to work even more closely together and go out weekly and provide street outreach, and one of the activities that they wanted us to consider funding was street outreach. And then bridge housing, probably one of the most challenging areas for these agencies is having a place for an individual or a family to stay while they're collecting all of the data and documents that's required to get them into supportive housing. What are the places, or where are the places, or how can we assist as a city to provide financing or funding for that bridge period of time to get someone document ready so they can actually get into a program, instead of letting them stay on the street where you may or may not be able to continue to have contact with them? And the second consultation, there were several items that the agencies wanted us to change, one of which was to ensure that the subrecipients are participating in our coordinated assessment and housing matching system, which is a new requirement of the Hearth Act. And actually, through the 25-Cities Initiative, we have been piloting a small program, and we'll be gradually expanding that, and the continuum will be working to expand that not just in the city of Fresno, but throughout the county and Madera County over the next year. And wanted to make sure that in our policies and procedures, that we had a place for the CFC to evaluate the outcomes of our subrecipients, and to ensure that those are meeting the expected requirements of the Hearth Act. Because one of their roles is to really act as a guidance agency for the city to ensure that we're meeting the Hearth Act requirements. Additionally, in our original draft, we had stated that there was a community conversation going on regarding a "come-as-you-are" shelter. The continuum has had representatives involved in that conversation, but it is not a direct recommendation of the continuum. They are supportive of sheltering activities, but they wanted to clarify that that was a different community conversation that was asking for and recommending a "come-as-you-are" shelter. So here are the opportunities that the public has had to comment on the substantial amendments. So again, August 10th, we published a notice that there would be a draft available for a 30-day public comment. That comment period started at the end of August and ended at the end of September. There was a public hearing before the Housing and Community Development Commission, where they heard a very similar presentation, but a little more detail and specific activities. They made a recommendation to the council to adopt this substantial amendment. However, the following week, the continuum asked for additional time to review the amendment, so we released a second 30-day public comment notice, and had a second public hearing before the HCDC. While there was not a quorum at that meeting, there were no substantial changes to the document that they originally heard in terms of activities and funding sources. So they heard public comment, but they were not able to make a second recommendation. So what are some of the other public comments that we received? Essentially, some of the public comments regarded the Hearth Act requirements, what are some of the additional documents that needed to be included. There was a concern that we had used the VA gap analysis that was provided to us through the 25-Cities Initiative, rather than the point-in-time count that was provided to us by the CFC. So we changed that document. There was also a request to change the policies and procedures from our past document to the current one used by the county, because we coordinate with the county on creation of those policies and procedures, so we did that as well. Those policies and procedures will continue to change and adapt as the CFC has comments and as regulations require us to make those changes. So that is somewhat of a fluid document, but it's attached to this amendment, to send to HUD to say, "Does this meet your requirements?" Again, the comments from the public in the second meeting, we had two members of the public who were present at the HCDC meeting. They really wanted to make sure that the HCDC was doing a better job of reviewing activities as the action plans were presented, and then as our annual performance reports were presented back to them. And there was grave concern that we were concentrating homeless providers and homeless services in one area, and the public asked that we disperse throughout the community. So all of those public comments have been included in the draft, and those would be reviewed as part of the policies and procedures in terms of dispersion of housing activities. So just as an outline over the types of activities, as we said, the first two categories, street outreach and emergency shelter, we cannot spend more than 60%. We've traditionally spent about a third to, down to as low as 20% to 25% of our activities on shelter over the last few years. So what we've tried to do is keep that somewhat consistent for our agencies that provide those, but working toward providing funding in rapid rehousing, wraparound services, and bridge housing. One of the things that we have been lacking is having, recently, is having a specialist, someone who is strictly committed to ensuring that we are meeting our homeless program requirements per the ESG program, as well as another program that we coordinate with the state. And so we are recommending that we allocate the administrative cap to allow us to hire someone who would be specialized in the emergency solutions program, as well as any other federal and state homeless programs, to ensure that we are meeting our programmatic requirements. The HMIS, or the data collection provider, is actually contracted through the Fresno Housing Authority. They are the local provider for the HMIS, and so that is a subcontract, not a subrecipient agreement. The Housing Authority is not eligible to be a subrecipient, but as a contractor, we would contract with them to do the data collection locally. And then, so 2011 funds were allocated by the city, again, in 2011. As part of the substantial amendment, I wanted to reflect that here to show how this has progressed. That was half of the year, so that was the second half of 2011. 2012 funds were allocated at that same time by the council, but not all of them were allocated. So we will be coming back with some subrecipient agreements, probably in January, for you to review. And then we would like to go ahead and release an RFP for 2013 and 2014 programmatic funds, so that, again, we need to get those funds out on the street, so that our agencies and our subrecipients can actually provide the services that are needed. So our subaward recommendations are to continue to work with the Fresno County. It's really important, we provide a lot of the same services, we fund a lot of the same agencies. We need to have a joint, or at least cooperative, RFP process. Right now, they're a little ahead of us in our timeline, because we're delayed, but we will still review all of the requests for proposals together, so that we're ensuring that we're not double-funding one agency and not funding another. We want to make sure that we're hitting all of the agencies that need it, as well as the joint policies and procedures. We would like to request extensions for program year 2012 for agencies that have not been able to complete those contracts that we stated were awarded earlier. And again, it is really important that when we hire someone, that we're able to collaborate regularly with the continuum to ensure that our program design and our allocation of resources are all compliant, not only with the Hearth Act, but work within the continuum as well. So what are we going to do next? We'll be submitting the amendments to HUD if they're approved by the council. We'll be submitting those to HUD for approval. We'll be submitting extension requests for those agencies who need to finish their programmatic funding from 2012. And then we'll be producing the RFP, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so that we can bring it back to the council in January and get those funds back out on the street. So with that, I would like to recommend that the council adopt, approve the substantial amendment to program years 2012, 13, and 14 annual action plans, and to authorize the city manager to sign any implementing documents. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Jennifer. All right, first, we'll go out to the public and see if there's any members of the public that would like to address this item. Please come on up.
I had to look around the street, wasn't it, Ashley? She began to talk like her, Jennifer's getting around here. But my concern with this issue is that nobody from the homeless camp had an opportunity to even speak to them, or to go out and get outreach from them. And we got all this money that's going top-heavy for the administration, all these organizations and all the projects. All this district around here belongs to Housing and Urban Development. This is HUD's property. They want all the money, they get everything, the people still homeless, they go to private houses, they got their folks in the mission, they're eating and everything, and the people eating, take out, they putting for people at risk, they not even homeless, but they at risk to be homeless. They already got a house. We want to take care of the people that's out there. Now, I know that we can get one of these big buildings that burned up around here, and just put them all in there. It's winter time coming up, they gonna be sleeping out there on the ground. They homeless. Now, how come the city of Fresno can't use some of that 1.7 million dollars we got, I just listed down here, what she just spoke about, and get a big building? And then put them in, let them go in, I don't care if they is drunk, so what? Everybody been drunk, y'all be drunk. Let them in there. If they don't have education, they don't have, nobody want to take them in the family because families think they're too good for anybody anyway, they put them out there. Put them in there. Get them off the street. That's the bottom line. All that money going through, all that writing, all them consultants, all these things up there, all them 25 agencies, and all these programs, they don't allow them in there because you don't qualify, because you're not good enough. This shit ain't right. We got to get, hi Bruce, you remember this, I'm looking at you while I'm talking. All this money and everything she talked about, it don't mean nothing to me. Only thing means something to me that allows the public to speak about all these issues concerning the homeless and get out there and see what's really going on. These folks, all colors, well-to-do-looking people, white, black, Mexicans, Hispanics, everybody out there, and they need a place to go. Tomorrow's gonna rain. What they gonna do? Still discuss this money? And she only said 25% is gonna go for the people? What about 75% going? We don't need them in the picture. We can deal with them, straight with the homeless, and cut all this other crap out she talked about, and just get a big old building, and put them all in there, like right there on Railroad Avenue, some big old empty buildings, like that they're money burnt up. That's somebody that's going all downtown, they can release some of these buildings, and let these homeless people get in. They don't own everything, this belongs to the city of Fresno. We ain't in Iraq right now, Syria, we in Fresno. We got to take care of our own people. I got some more time, and I'm glad, because it's not right for these people to come up here and beg. That's what she doing, she begging. For all this money, for her administration, for her organization, for all this here, and sound like Ashley Swearingen on all this crap, we got to think about those people that I pass every day coming up here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Barbara.
And the board.
Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right, then, Councilman Danes.
Thanks, Council President. Really quick, Jennifer. So...
I don't know. I wonder what that was in my head, I thought it was shit for a moment.
So I just wanted to get a couple of things squared away, because I got a call from, or my chief of staff got a call from a constituent last night that attended the HCDC meeting. And I know in the presentation that you mentioned, in the staff report, it talks about, we didn't have quorum last week at the meeting. They're concerned, and if you could talk in a little bit more detail about that, they're concerned about the fact that they didn't have quorum. How does that affect the public hearing process as far as HUD's concerned with this?
Very good. So in September, the Housing and Community Development Commission heard a presentation, heard public comment actually had a full complement of members regarding the activities and the budget, which are the primary components of the substantial amendment. Those have not changed. So when we re-released the draft, we took additional comment, which were really mainly based on the policies and procedures, a few minor changes. HCDC did hear additional public comment, which was included in the staff report, as well as the document, but were not able to make an additional recommendation. There is no requirement, because there was no change from the original document in terms of the activities and the budget, to go back to HCDC. We wanted to make sure there was additional opportunity for public to comment and to include that, but there was no additional requirement for us to go back, so HUD will not consider that to be an issue.
Okay, so the event that triggers a change is if there's a change in budget or program delivery?
Right. Specifically, in program delivery, in areas, activities, those activities, and then changes within the budget itself.
Okay. And, okay, so I just wanted to make sure, you know, surprisingly, they didn't show up today, but I'm not necessarily complaining. But I just wanted to make sure that we had that covered, so that if it comes up again, we know how to describe that and explain what happened with the HCDC meeting. And I kind of wanted to touch base really quick, I'll just a couple more questions on the housing, I'm sorry, the homeless manager. Of course, I almost slipped Bruce and said housing manager. Yeah, Bruce, I almost slipped and said housing manager, because I'm still waiting on my housing manager. But you did mention the fact that we're going to have a homeless manager, or someone to really manage the programs. When are we going, and I'm glad to hear that, by the way. As you all know, I believe that we need to have key positions with the work that we're trying to do. When do we plan to hire for that?
So the housing manager position actually closes on Friday.
Oh, outstanding.
So we're looking forward to reviewing those applications, and hoping that we have a really good pool that we can bring forward, someone pretty quickly on that. We are in the process of actually creating a job description for a homeless program specialist, which would really focus in on the programmatic guidelines, not only the federal government, but any state and regional programs that would be available, and would be that liaison with the continuum and with our subrecipients, who would actually really administer that program from beginning to end, and really get into the meat of that. So we hope to have that particular job description ready. It'll need to go through the city's process of creating, obviously, a job classification for that individual, but I would hope that no later than January, we'd be advertising.
All right, that's on the public record. So I'm going to be coming back for that, Bruce, by the way, because, you know, these positions are key in order to effectively manage in the resources that we have. I know, you know, we take it a little lightly sometimes, and I get it, but, you know, this is key. You know, the lack of a housing manager has been a significant issue in our housing department, and as we gear up to really make our homeless resources work, we need somebody there to do all of those things you described. So I look forward to making sure that we have somebody in the key position. And then, lastly, I just wanted to cover, you know, we met about this item a couple weeks back. Our office made some recommendations. I noticed none of those recommendations made it into the document. We didn't, you know, can you explain that to me?
So there were some recommendations in terms of the policies and procedures. As you know, we collaborate with the county on the policies and procedures. The ones that are attached to the document are different from the original attachment in the original draft. The original draft was our old policies and procedures that were presented in 2011. Those have been amended with the county, and so what we did was include the new policies and procedures. There are some recommendations that the continuum is going to be making for some tweaks and some changes to that. So it's really important that our policies and procedures stay concurrent with the counties as we move forward.
And how are we working with the county? How's that relationship going, as far as you?
So we have a direct contact with the county. They have a person who administers their emergency solutions grant program, as well as their other homeless activities that they have. And so we've been collaborating, going back and forth on the draft document, on the RFPs. They're wanting to get their funds out in a more timely manner, so they've moved a little bit ahead of us. But we have regular conversations about how... But we have regular conversations about how, how we put the programs out, how we do the RFP. So, I would say we have a very positive working relationship with the county.
All right, thanks, Jennifer.
Councilman Jeong.
Thank you. Jennifer, is the funding that we, we receive for our program and their program, are they coming from the same place?
Yes. For the emergency solutions grant, yes, they come from HUD directly.
So, i- is it because we're the city that, that we're also able to qualify for this program, or, or is there a particular reason why the, the funding, if, if it's coming to serve really the same residents, that it's not through the county because they're, they're basically our social safety network here?
It's a, it's a, for, um, excuse me, it's a formula allocation program. So, the formula is based on number of persons in homelessness, income levels of the population, the number of people within the population. The, the county receives an allocation countywide. There is a discount made for, for the population within the city of Fresno. However, what we have found, or what the county has found, is predominantly the persons in homelessness in the county will end up in the city for services because the county provides those services here. They have additional resources that we do not have. Our only resource is the emergency solutions grant, which has provided two subrecipients to provide the wraparound housing, the transitional housing, shelter, prevention, and support. So, that's the only source that we have. They have additional sources. So, even though their program covers the entire county, many of those residents would come to, within the city limits, to get those services.
No, I mean, so, I want to make sure I'm clear. I'm not in any way saying that whatever additional resources that we can bring to, to the needs that we have here, that we shouldn't go after. My question is, is, is which agency, whether it's us or the county, because we're providing the same service to the residents, as you say, those, those services end up being here in the city anyway. But as the agency, that is our, our social safety network here for the entire county. Is it because they're not able to get that particular funding source, or is it something that we're doing, that we're getting the funding source?
We both receive the same funding source. The emergency solutions grant program is provided on a formula that's defined by HUD, and so the county, based on their size and population and income homelessness, receives a certain allocation based on a formula. We receive an allocation based on the same formula. There is a discount to what the county receives because we are within that county footprint, but it is the exact same program, and that's why we have to collaborate with them to ensure that we're not double funding one agency or duplication of services and, and funding to make sure that we're, we're dispersing it appropriately throughout, throughout the city.
And so, that would be what, what HUD is looking for, for, for us, that we're not doing that duplication, correct?
Correct.
Because it is the same money that, that's coming through.
It's the same pool, it's the same pot of money.
Right.
Yes.
It's the same pot of money. We're providing basically, however we identify those individuals that's gonna receive the services, but our services has to be, well, they would be different from what the county is, is providing, correct?
They're, they're all the same categories. So, the, the county funds the same types of categories, but in a different, they don't use necessarily the same numbers that we use and/or percentages. Theirs is based on their needs countywide, rather than just within the footprint of the city.
Yeah, that, that would be a little bit difficult to, to try to, I guess, comprehend from up here. You know, from, at least from my perspective, if it's funding source is the same pot of money, we're technically serving the same residents, and then we have two agencies operating it. And so, there's, when you have two agency, obviously, no matter how well we try to work together, there's always, you know, that example is that they've already started theirs and we're trying to catch up. And that's complicated. And then, we're also ended up working with the same entities out there, coming to two different sources for the same funding. That, I think creates, we will create some confusion for our service providers and how we addressed the homeless needs, especially if they're all providing similar type of services, but going through two different RFPs to, to say, city, and then to say county, and then to, to identify then which are we trying directly to do. You know, I, I have really some more questions about this. I'm not sure, I feel comfortable enough. You know, I don't know if this is time sensitive. If it passed, that's great, but, you know, I, I still want to spend a little bit more time on this. So, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a continuance, but I, I see Renee's up there saying that it is time sensitive. Explain.
So, we, we are, there's a couple of things. We're required to amend our action plan to ensure that we have all of these, all of these activities and all of these funds allocated going forward, as well as make sure that our past allocations, that our subrecipients can continue to provide services. They're waiting for these funds. We've already delayed them 30 days to, to have a recirculation of the notice. They, we're, we're trying to get those funds out. Again, we're, we're a little behind in getting those monies out. The 2013 programmatic funds will expire in September of next year, so it's really important we get those dollars out on the ground so that, so that the service providers can actually allocate those funds and can use those funds. However, we will be coming back to the council in January with an allocation plan with those subrecipients who will, who would we, we be contracting with? And this is, and then we can show how we worked with the county to ensure that there wasn't a duplication of services, that we were ensuring that the programmatic guidelines were met between the two agencies, and that's why we work collaboratively, and that's why the continuum really oversees that conversation between the city and the county to make sure that we are meeting the, the needs as established by the Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care.
Okay. So, a, a simple way of saying that we don't have the time, if that's what I'm hearing?
We, we really do need to, to move this forward. We have essentially run out of time for some of the, the prior allocations, and we can't get the services out on the street until we, we amend the action plan. So, that's, that's really substantially what we're asking for today, is to move on the, the action plan amendment, and council will have the opportunity then to go back and look at the various programmatic changes.
Yeah. You know, I, I mean, I understand the time sensitivity, but I, if you were asking me to, to support it right now, I wouldn't, because there's, there's some larger issue for, for me to, to feel comfortable with. And it's really not only what I asked, but also I'm more in depth in terms of how the funding is allocated through our usage and, and what that means. And I'm not comfortable with the answer that I've gotten with, with both of us going at it at a different pace. And so, I was, with, with that understanding of what, what staff is asking, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they will continue one week and give me a chance to sit down with, with Jennifer and whoever staff is, is doing that, so, so, so I can feel a little bit more comfortable on how we're using this and then understand the separation of the, of the funding source and what we're gonna go after. So, that, colleagues, that, that's what I would be asking, that this come back on next week, and so I hope I get a second. I'm just asking for continuance. Till next week.
All right, we have a motion to continue and a second. The screen is clear. If none of the rest of you guys would like to comment, then I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, although I'm gonna be supporting that continuance. And can, I would also like to meet with you or your staff, Jennifer, on this issue, but let me ask a couple of quick questions. Let's see, well, those two I can ask when we meet. Okay. I heard a couple of different conflicting things. You gave a list that showed a lot of different opportunities for people to get involved, for the community to have a voice in this process. Is that, is that correct?
Right.
It looks like there were six or seven meetings they could have jumped in on.
There, the continuum, we met with the continuum twice, and we met at HCDC twice, the public draft. There were two public drafts available and two additional, two publication periods for those drafts, yes.
Okay, cool. And we've been getting lately at the meetings that we've been holding about the water, we've been having upwards of 150 people or so in those meetings. What kind of attendance were we having at these meetings?
So, the continuum, again, is comprised of over 30 agencies that provide support services. At the first HCDC meeting, we had one member from the continuum who came to speak on, on the, the amendment, and then we had two members of the public from, and one member from an agency at the last HCDC meeting.
Well, so, I'm specifically at talking about public participation, so...
Right, there were two, there were two members of the public at the last meeting, and they had some really great comments that were incorporated in terms of making sure that there was accountability and that there was a dispersion of the, the services that were provided.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to get a, kind of a grasp on how many members of the public were, were throwing themselves into this issue, so, thank you. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it's always interesting how they, you know, when they're given opportunities, we don't hear about it, but then, once we make a decision, then we hear about it. But I'm okay with that. I'm gonna ask the rest of my questions when we have a meeting, and then we'll come back next week, if that continuance passes, but... So, we have a clear screen, we've talked to the public, we have a motion and a second to continue this item for a week. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Councilman Jeong, you have your continuance. All right, now we're on to general administration item 2B. That's the approval, approve the section of and award a contract to SP Plus Corporation to provide parking facilities management services to Fresno.
Good morning, Council President, City Council, Renee Smith, Assistant City Manager. I'm here today to present staff's recommendation requesting the city council approve the selection of SP Plus Corporation to provide professional parking facilities management services at the city-owned downtown parking lots and garages and at three regional park sites. The proposed contract is in the amount of $6,066,056 for the first five-year term. In addition to the initial five-year term, the proposed contract includes five one-year optional extensions. Staff also recommends that the city manager, in conjunction with the city attorney or their representatives, be authorized to sign the original five-year contract and the one-year extensions on behalf of the city of Fresno. As you're aware, since 2005, downtown parking facilities management services have been provided to the city by ACE Parking. The term of the service agreement with ACE has ended. A request for proposal for these services for the next five years was released to the public on February 10th, 2014. The city received seven proposals, of which four were ultimately deemed responsive to the RFP. The proposals were reviewed by the Parking Management Services RFP Selection Review Committee, which conducted four rounds of, of meetings, including two interviews with the finalist, SP Plus Corporation. The selection of SP Plus Corporation was based on both qualitative analysis as well as cost, as judged by the committee as what was going to best need, meet the city's interest and objectives in our parking management services. SP Plus's business model, customer service approach, strong financial position, and good financial reporting were important factors in our decision. SP Plus has been in business since 1929. They operate more than 4,300 parking facilities in the U.S. and Canada in over 400 cities. They are a publicly traded company. SP Plus presented a comprehensive plan for customer service, technology, and their costs were deemed reasonable. They've also demonstrated a commitment to Fresno's revitalization efforts downtown. The committee and staff all concurred unanimously that SP Plus Corporation will be a valuable partner and will provide excellent service while efficiently managing the parking program in downtown Fresno. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
All right, thanks, Renee. We're first gonna go out to the public, and some people have turned in cards. We're gonna tackle the, the cards first and then give anybody else an opportunity as well. So, our first one up is Bob Dowd, it looks like. Yep, perfect.
Mr. President, council members, staff, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here on behalf of ACE Parking, the people who are doing your work presently and have been doing it for about the last nine years. I look at page three of the staff report. Page three says, "Final due diligence determined that three submittals were non-responsive." Final due diligence found that three were non-responsive. Why is that? I would suggest is because if you go back to the October 9 meeting that you had, you were being asked to approve a contract with Republic. And at that time, staff was telling you that the selection committee, committee had done its due diligence, and Republic was who should be selected by you. We, at that time, raised the question, and I would ask that our comments in my letter of October 6, 2014 submitted to you be incorporated in this proceeding, as well as my letter to you of October 28 for today's meeting be incorporated, which I know was served on the Madam Clerk, and I believe given to each of you. And instead of belaboring all of the comments I had in the October 6, as well as October 28, I will try to summarize because I realize this is a limited time to comment. We would suggest you should not feel secure. The reason that Republic was found not to be presented to you after it was recommended that that's who you accept, and I would suggest if you go back and read the staff report of the meeting of October 9 and read the staff report today, it does not address how Addendum 5 was completely missed by Republic, and we raised that issue to you, that Addendum 5, which is a very expensive item. Addendum 5 talks about parks, Rhodyne, Woodward Park, talks about special events, talks about people that are involved, labor. And of course, we at ACE know what labor costs, and therefore, we knew that the Republic could not be correct. Now, with SP, we look at SP, and of course, what we presented to you is, we would suggest to you that SP is clearly off of the mark. They did address Addendum 5 in a partial way, but not fully. Also, it talks about the savings from SP to ACE, but there's no addressing of all of the pass-through dollars. We've been your partner for some nine years, and when you come to us and said, you know, we need porta-potties on the Fulton Mall, you can do that much easier, you do it and pass through, we're more than happy to do that, so we arrange for porta-potties. When you come to us and tell us that you have security that's costing you $60,000 a month, and we can arrange it where it's $15,000 a month and put it on our billing and pass through to you, we're more than happy to do it, because we're your partner. When you ask us to consider our fee during the contract, because the city of Fresno was financially struggling, like lots of other cities, we cut our fee by 20%. Didn't want to, but of course, being a good partner, we recognized your request, honored your request, and proceeded in that regard. I have here today the president of the company, Mr. Burton. I have an executive vice president, Mr. Greshimer. I have the operations director, Mr. Bashan. We're more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. It would be our suggestion that there is clearly more due diligence that's required. In other words, we should sit down, we're your, for nine years, we've been in, in your town with six... with 60 people working and an office sits here, and of course, there's no local credit acknowledged for us, but we're here. We're more than happy to sit down with the selection committee. They had a tough task.
Yep.
This Assistant City.
Bob, what I'll do is, yeah, you're, you're out of time, and that's okay. We let, I'll call you back up.
Thank you very much.
And you can continue, yes. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next one is Rick Rousch.
Thank you, Council President and Council Members and City Manager for the opportunity to speak. I'm a property owner at 2014 Tulare, Venice and Tulare, TW Patterson Building. For the last 20 years, I own and operate a parking garage there. I am a past chairman of the P-Bid downtown here, and I am a current board member of the bid, and I was part of the selection committee. And I want to compliment the staff for running a very proficient and tight orderly RFP. And staff also had organized herself in a way of great communication. I'm here to tell you that the recommendation that we made with SP Plus is the best and superior recommendation. I am also here to tell you that I'm saddened to say that ACE is not a candidate that we should consider any longer downtown. I personally have had experiences with the inefficiencies of their staff, with break-ins, robberies of my tenants, different violations and different attitudes and lack of education. I'm sorry. It just doesn't warrant, and change needs to happen, and we need to upgrade, and we need to take advantage of this opportunity. I would encourage the council to honor the recommendation by the staff and what the committee's done. It is the best, and it serves the purpose. And we look forward to, as bid owners and property owners downtown, this is what we need. And my representation of the entire property owners downtown, I, I take that very seriously as board member to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick. Next one is Dan Doyle.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Again, I'm Dan Doyle. I'm the CEO for Central Valley Community Bank, which is the largest community bank here in Fresno. And I also have the honor of serving on the Board of Directors for the Downtown Fresno Partnership, also known as the, the P-Bid, the Property-Based Improvement District. One of the key roles, as we have been existing now for four years, had the opportunity to participate in the establishment of the P-Bid, that we heard from the property owners, that we continue to hear from the property owners as well as the feedback from their tenants, people like me that are merchants providing services downtown, is that this organization has the, the opportunity to speak in one voice representing those property owners. And I'm here today to share with you some of the things that we've heard from the beginning of the establishment of the P-Bid. And in many other communities, the same type of thing, that parking is a critical part of the revitalization for the downtown, and a critical part for us as merchants, property owners, to increase the values and to draw more people in to make our downtown more viable and more positive for people to want to come downtown. My experience, and what I've heard from our constituents, property owners from downtown, is it's not just about the price, and it's not just about the availability, but it really is about the experience that people have when they step into our parking facilities. The feeling of safety, the feeling of cleanliness, really the experience. And as a person serving the community, we always talk about the customer experience. And that's one of the things that we've found has been lacking with the current provider of service. So while I did not serve on the selection committee for the, the recommendation to the city, and the city is moving to you today, I certainly support it as, as a member of the community, as a business owner, run a business, I should say, and as a partnership, is I think it's been a fair process. I think it's been an open process, and I think the committee came with the right recommendation to, to the city manager. So I would support that.
Thank you. Next is Aaron Blair.
Thank you, and good morning. Again, I'm Aaron Blair. I'm the new president and CEO for the Downtown Fresno Partnership. And I'm here as a represent, representative of the organization to show our support for the recommendation to approve SP Plus as the new parking management. And I just wanted to stress the importance of every decision that we're making over the next year and a half. We, we have been given an opportunity downtown with the opening of Fulton Street that most cities would love to have. And with this opportunity before us right now to reconstruct our main street, every decision that we make going forward over the next year and a half is critical. So, I'm here as a representative, again, of the organization and of the property owners and business owners to tell you that this is something that's healthy for our downtown. And anything that we can do that's gonna help support our businesses and, and the success of downtown, that's what we as an organization and you as our partner, we should look at. So, thank you.
Thank you. Craig Shartan.
Morning, Council President and City Council. Welcome to, back to Fresno. Mr. Dowd, a good friend of mine from Hanford. I wanted to speak to you today on behalf of my restaurant on the Fulton Mall, Downtown Fresno Partnership and the selection committee. I underscore the things that have been raised here by the other business and property owner representatives. We are strongly in favor of change. And I know that you, as representatives, hear about parking downtown all the time. The current operator has had nine years to make a case that they should be the frontrunner in this, and they simply have not performed at a level that I know any business or any property owner is pleased with. We face people sitting in booths that are reading papers or phones that don't greet people as they enter our downtown. They're unaware of the businesses around them. Recently went into the convention center garage and asked the person at the booth if they knew where Georgia Shishkabob was, and they had never heard of it before. It's within sight of the booth of that garage of a business that's been there for 35 years. That's just, it's not tolerable. We're paying people to be at the front line of our downtown revitalization program that should be welcoming, friendly, be able to give directions and suggestions. We're, we're not getting any of that. So it's time for change. We have this window of opportunity to make sure when that street is open that we have the best possible parking system and best possible parking management to back up that system to make the changes that we need. So we urge you to support the staff recommendation. And I also want to commend Assistant City Manager Renee Smith. She ran an outstanding program, as, as did the rest of the city staff. Thank you.
Bill Kep.
Hello, good morning. I'm Bill Kep. I'm a regional manager with SP Plus. I wanted to thank the staff and council for their time spent working on the RFP process. And I wanted to let you know how proud we are to be selected as the recommended operator for the parking facilities. I also wanted to relay how confident we are that our proposal not only was compliant with the RFP process, it was also responsive to every aspect of it. Regarding Addendum 5, all of that labor was included in our price proposal. And lastly, I just wanted to add that as the nation's largest parking operator and the parking operator for prominent California cities such as San Jose, Oakland, and San Francisco, we are the best prepared to address all of the city of Fresno's needs going forward. Thank you. I'm available for questions as well.
Thank you. Ann Barbara, you're next.
On this issue, it's very easy for me. Now, these people here, the Resource Management Department, Development and Resource Management Department, that is not our department. Even Mark Scott had to put his job on one accord because he couldn't worship two masters working for the city of Fresno and the city council or these people. Now, we got a lot of debt with these parking things out here, these parking lots, rules and everybody else. And my question is, why should we change this ship in the middle of the ocean? We shouldn't do it. Queen over here in Canada, she got enough problems. These people got enough problems all over the world. We need somebody been here all the time, know what we doing, instead of parking meter time, move them cars out a little bit farther. And these people has done a good job. I've been here all my life, 67 years. Mr. Shannon, I've got to talk about the place over here, I'm not, might not be pronouncing his name right. He's on that revitalization. They had ample time to fix anything, but they let downtown go down to the dogs. They haven't did nothing. And Renee, she done been everything around here from city manager, controller, to any damn thing around here. We need some new, new folks up here to answer these questions. Who are you working for? The city of Fresno or for these other people in here that's upstairs, franchises and corporations and stuff like this? Now, I don't appreciate them using the same people to move around the corp here and talking about what they're doing. I wanna know who paying them that check. If you got, we paying them, the taxpayers, the city of Fresno, the one elected the council for, are these managing people that's piggybacking off of us? I said, these people here have been doing a good job. We haven't had any complaints. Those signs and stuff, that's their department to put them signs and stuff up. What your little taco shop, or your little whatever this thing you're talking about, shish kebab shop, that's their department to request this for the parking people to put them up. They don't supposed to go out and do something on their own. That's not their job. And we got so much junk bond debt for all these parking lots running around here over these years. I knew, I've been coming here since this place was born and when the other place, uh, city hall was over there on Fresno Street. And we got plenty of bond debt for these things. And these people here are well familiar with it. Now, these people over here that's coming, wanna go to Canada, San Francisco, all the way around the world, the queen got enough up here. That's why we in America today, so we, we don't have the queen to be our boss no more. United States, we stand on our own ground to make our own decisions. We had a war with them one time, two in one. So you guys gotta go along with what we already done have. And then the downtown is coming up, since we let all the tax, as tax increments go to the same people, city and grain bills and all them. We gotta keep it where you guys know, all the money that's paying for all these parking lots. We built a new parking lot behind the convention center. We gotta keep track with that. And these people don't even know which one it is and how it is, to my speculation, aboard sad. These folks know. And then I know their garages is clean. I walk past them all the time. So they can't lie up here to me, 'cause I'm out here all the time. No, we gotta stick with these folks that we know. Thank you.
All right, that's all the cards that have been turned in for this issue. But if you, if you haven't turned in a card, that's okay. You can still walk up and talk to us for three minutes. So are there any other members of the public that would like to address this issue, this item? All right then. Bob, I had told you that I would call you back up. You could finish, you know, sharing with us your concerns.
Mr. President, thank you very much for the consideration, and I'll be brief. It seems like it's turned into two issues: money and service. I came up and I addressed the money. We're saying that the money is not correct for what was asked in the RFP. We've pointed out why the money is not correct as we pointed, as was requested in the RFP. So if you go from three booths at Woodward Park to two booths, clearly there's a difference. But the request was for three. We bid what was requested. Secondly, we knew exactly the town, and we knew what it costs for us to do business here. Can we become the welcome wagon? Absolutely. It's just a question of more people. But that's driven by how much it's gonna cost to the city. It's interesting to note that everyone that came up did not address Addendum 5. They didn't address the cleaning of the parking lots that we do, that was asked to be bid. There's nothing about that. No one addressed Addendum 5 as to how they are proposing for their dollars, fewer people. All we bid was the number of people that you asked us to bid, the people that would be there. They're silent on elevator repair. No one comes up and talks about that, but that's an expense, and of course, we have all of those numbers. So why should you feel secure? I go back to, you were told to feel secure that it was Republic, that Republic had done everything and was who you should select. And we show up at the last meeting, and of course, it was pulled from the agenda. We had, we had said to the city, "Why Republic was non-responsive." Staff now concludes what we concluded, they're non-responsive. We would suggest to you that SP is non-responsive, because it does not address all that was requested in the RFP. So clearly, it looks good. But if you're at $6 million in the agreement, and you sign that agreement, and it turns out to be a $9 million project, one of two things has to occur. Either SP loses the $3 million, or SP comes back and says to you, "We told you we, what we were gonna do. It was in our bid. We only said that there would be this number of people at Woodward Park, only this number of people at Rhoding Park. It doesn't matter what you asked of us. You told us to bid it. We did. We told you what we were gonna do. You accepted that." So it's, it's not a good ending in any respect. And that's why we would suggest that it should not go forward with approval today. Clearly send it back to staff. You have somebody in place. ACE is in place. Sit down with ACE and truly get an understanding of what are the needs for the parking here. You may ultimately, at the end of all this process, reject ACE. You may. But at least it was a complete process, that all the information was presented to you. And so when you directed the city manager to execute, and the city attorney to execute on behalf of the city, everyone, you, ACE, the citizens, all know what the deal is. And that's what we request. We're here to answer any questions that you may have, and I thank you for the additional time.
Right on. You're welcome. Thank you, Bob. All right then. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item? Councilman Brand.
Thank you, Council President. This issue, for me, has been really perplexing because at least the relationship with ACE has always been, from my point of view, been very open, always willing to talk. And I think there are legitimate issues here regarding past performance, but, you know, I hear the people from P-Bid, and I know they have legitimate concerns. I really don't know, you know, where the truth lies in terms of, you know, the level of performance. But on these bids, Renee, so on the initial receipt of the RFPs, Republic ultimately was kicked out because they did not bid on the, the park portion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And LAZ, similar shortcomings, and then of course, Pro Park didn't include what the.
The costing sheet.
You're right. So, they're completely out of the deal. And so originally, it was Republic, correct? That was the initial choice of the committee?
Right. Actually, the, the committee, when we were making our final decision, had come down to Republic and SP Plus. There were five members sitting on the committee. All, the entire committee had agreed at that point in time that we thought that both operations would be able to provide the service that we were looking for and that the cost was within the, the range that we were, we, we had identified. And so we were all very comfortable with either of, of the corporations. However, two of the committee members felt that, that maybe Republic had an edge because of the customer service and the types of services that they provided over SP. The other two committee members felt that SP had that edge. And I think their strength was in, in their financial performances. And so then, I was the fifth committee member, and I was the tiebreaker. And I felt that because of the strong relationship that the partnership was going to need to have with, you know, with the enterprise, that, that I would give the edge to them. Then as we continued to complete our due diligence before we brought the matter to council, yes, it did come to our attention that the Republics did not include the Addendum 5 costs and information in there. They confirmed that to us via an email. We also continued our due diligence with the other contracts, and that's where Laz was also disqualified.
And of the three bidders that were all qualified, SP, who did include all the. And of the three bidders that were all qualified, SP, who did include all the parks and so on, was six million dollars. ACE, eight point three, and the other one, ABM, nine point two, they were clearly the low bidder, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But I know I talked to ACE, and their, their comparison was to Republic at six point five. And again, if Republic had left out the parks, of course, it wasn't a true bid. So based on the three surviving bidders, correct me if I'm wrong, SP clearly had the low bid, correct? At six million dollars?
Actually, of, there were four, and they weren't the lowest bidder. There was, there were two others that were lower.
That's right, Parking Concepts?
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. However, they weren't response, they, they, the committee didn't feel like they had the strength in the technology and in the overall business plan that they presented in the RFP.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Renee. Dale? Can I speak, ask a few questions, please?
Good morning. Dale Estabrook, Parking Services, Code Enforcement.
How many years have you been in, experienced in parking for the city?
This is my second, this is my second career and my longest career. I've been doing this now for twenty-three years.
Okay, so I value your judgment. Since I've been here for six years, you've always been straightforward, honest, hardworking. So, you know, trying to evaluate these two different versions of, of ACE, what, how do you weigh in on this, Dale?
Well, this is a very tough one for me. I have a, a long-term relationship with ACE. I also had a long-term relationship with our previous parking operator, which is now known as ABM. So on this particular one, I kind of sat on the sidelines. I wanted a good, fair bid. I didn't want anybody to say that you're pushing one way because of your experience and relationship. The major parking companies in this country, and two of them are sitting right here, are all outstanding in what they do. But the committee chose on this one that they thought that SP and Republic had a better proposal moving forward.
So you feel confident with the choice?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Dale.
Sure thing.
You know, this issue, to me, is really important to the city. I mean, it has a, you know, an overarching impact on the revitalization of downtown Fresno. To me, this strategy of, you know, of, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a changing strategy, more event-driven, bringing people down there, and this is, you know, for anybody who's been in Fresno, there's a legacy of, you know, the downtown parking garage that was built and never did what it expected to do. You know, I don't want to park downtown. I can't find a parking stall. But realistically, there's plenty of parking downtown. Everybody looks for surface parking. They don't, they drive by the garages and ignore them. But to, you know, coordinate and tie in the key elements of downtown, which are going to be the baseball stadium, which we'll discuss, a project in one of our later items today, the convention center complex, the Fulton Mall, and whether you like it or not, the High Speed Rail Station, all these key venues have to, have to be planned on. And I think just parking is an important component. So for me, it's really important that we, we find the right company, not only from a pricing point of view, but from a performance, cusper-oriented point of view. And I don't believe we should send this thing back. I think it's, I'm satisfied that the process and the people involved in the decision-making process were, were fair. And I respect, you know, the ACE. I've met with them and their track record. I will listen to my council colleagues, but I know I'm willing to make a decision today, you know, based on the recommendations of the city staff. But again, this to my colleagues, just to underline the importance of this, this contract and how it impacts the future of downtown Fresno. Thank you.
Councilman Zhang.
Thank you. Renee? So I'm going to kind of talk about, well, piggyback on Member Brands in terms of the process real quick, but maybe on a different, different note. In terms of our selection of the, the committee, what are they made of?
The committee consisted of, the, the scoring committee consisted of Bob Corey, who is the city's principal internal auditor. Michael Lima, who is now the finance director, controller. At that time, he was the administrative manager out at Fresno Yosemite International Airport. Two members from the Downtown Partnership, Craig Shartan, who at the time was the interim CEO, and also a Rick Roush board member, and then I was also part of that committee. We also had staff available, only technical advisors to the committee, and it did include Dale Estabrook and Dan Zach, Assistant Director of DARM.
Okay. Now, I obviously understand the partnership in terms of the P-Bid, because they are specifically downtown. They do a lot of work with our parking folks. But are they, in terms of this contract, is there somewhere in there that the P-Bid is providing some financial contribution to what we're paying here, to whoever the new parking entity will be?
They will be, you know, and perhaps I should, I should defer to, to them as far as the, the type of coordination that's going to be taking place, but there's, there's no financial.
Okay. I just want, so, so there's no financial, where there's, there's an outside contract that says, you know, the partnership or P-Bid is going to provide X amount of dollars to help offset this contract that the city is having with the new entity that's coming in, or whoever the entity is, correct?
Right, but there is going to be coordination and oversight provided.
No, no, as I said, this is, the partnership is critical in terms of what they're trying to do and what we're trying to do here. But I just want to make sure that I understand clearly that the city here is the one, is paying for this contract, correct?
Yes.
And this is what, is it a ten-year contract? Is that what it is?
It's a five-year contract with the option to, for five continuous years after that, on a year-by-year basis.
Okay. And so what is rationale on having the partnership, having two votes on, on this particular committee?
Because the, most of the parking and the garages are, are in the downtown core area, the area where they are going to be coordinating the events, and where the businesses that are being served are, are, you know, directly in collaboration with all of the parking services that are going to be provided. So of course, it's very important for them and for us to have that collaboration and to have that voice in the type of customer service and the type of parking services that the city needs.
So again, I definitely appreciate the, the partnership, how valuable it is, what it means. But in terms of the weight of, of the vote here, that I'm asking, we're having five members in terms of the selection committee, and then having that, almost half of it, is, is part of the weight in terms of the scoring process.
Actually, the majority were city staff, though.
It's three, two. Well, I'll get a little bit into that. My concern here, obviously, you know, I've seen the two partnerships come up, and there's already, at least from my perspective here, bias in terms of the existing provider. And I want to make sure whether they continue to be the provider of the parking service or anybody else, the process, as, as Member Brands says, is extremely important. And we want to make sure that when we have partners and bidders come through, that they're going to have a fair shot. And I will tell you this, council colleagues, we sit up here, we have seven votes. And, and you know, when you have votes already that is against you, it makes it very difficult. When you drop that down to five, and half of that, or close to it, is already in an opinion that is not in support of whatever entity, it makes it very difficult, sitting up there to say that this process was at least fair to all the partners. And so, you know, I wanted to make sure that whether they sit on there or they become a consultant on the side, or, or how they weigh in, my concern here is that having those weight in terms of the scoring process, at least for, for this council member, creates a cloud for me. And, and then hearing the comments initially already coming through that there is a bias against the existing one, whether their number is higher or lower comparatively to the five that we have, is concerning to me. And, and that process, folks, is, is one of the few things that we have up here that we can make sure, do a check and balance of all the partners. The other question I have, that once the disqualification occurred, and we actually have, you said there were three, but actually there were only two from, I remember looking, looking at the sheets that we have that actually met the requirements, correct?
Well, no, there were, there were four.
Four?
Four of the seven. So we disqualified three.
Well, disqualified then, what was left out besides, there was Parking Concept, there's SP, and I didn't know who was the third one?
We have SP Plus Corporation, which was deemed responsive. Republic Parking, which was deemed not responsive. Parking Concepts, which was deemed responsive. Laz Parking, which is, was deemed non-responsive. ACE Parking, who was deemed responsive, but ABM Parking, which was deemed responsive, and Pro Park, which was deemed non-responsive.
So ADM was also responsive?
Yes.
And what was their bid?
ABM, the cost of their bid was nine million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
So they were clearly over SP?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, I guess, Public Concept, Parking Concept?
Parking Concepts.
What was their bid?
Four, four million, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
About two, about two, two difference, two million dollar difference?
About a million and a half.
Million and a half? Now, I, I know that part of the recommendation was that we, I guess the scoring committee didn't feel that they had the technology or the overall capacity?
Yeah, well, we, we looked at, you know, we looked at the bid cost as one of the factors. We also looked at some other qualitative factors that were, you know, the type of customer service programs that they spoke to within the RFP. We looked at the overall business plan that they had. And that included, you know, their ideas for how we could improve parking and, and revenues and, and technology overall in the downtown. Frankly, from, from my perspective, I was also very interested in their financial strength and in their financial reporting. And that's, that is one of the factors why SP and, and Public, you know, Republic rose to the top. It didn't feel like Parking Concepts had that strength that those two had.
And so ADM was all, to your perspective, then the bid was too high?
That was one of the factors, as well as the RFP wasn't as strong in, in, in terms of the, the overall business plan.
So once the process, I guess, self-elimination of Republic was, was taken off the list, was there an attempt or, or interview to talk with the other two, the other two that met the requirements?
We did actually interview SP Plus. We asked them to come back in and meet with the committee. We questioned them very deeply on their, their proposal and their plan, so that we would feel completely confident that they could meet the needs that we were looking for, both at the, at the park sites and in downtown, and that the staffing and the cost that they had in their proposal was going to meet those needs. And we also recognized that there's some, you know, parking downtown is different than parking at the airport. SP Plus currently provides that service out at the airport. They're doing a, a great job there. But downtown is different because of all of the events that we have, and frankly, the fact that it's going to be under construction very soon, so it can get complicated very quickly. So we asked them a lot of very intense questions about that and how they would proceed in, in managing that, as well as just overall staffing. And at the end of, at the end of that interview, the committee unanimously agreed that we were very comfortable, that they would absolutely meet what we were looking for in the RFP and at the price that they gave us for that RFP.
So we called SP back twice, second time to, to kind of just go over whatever other details or concerns that we may have, or just to see where they would go about explaining some of the questions that we may have. Now, do we call any other ones to come back and talk with them? Whether they're too low, too high, just say, you know, to kind of see what their perspective was, why their numbers were too low, why they were too high, and, and why we thought, or what they thought that they can take care of it for that much less, or what their reasons for going that much more? Do we at all reach out to the other two?
Actually, we did do outreach to the others to confirm that they, that their proposals either did or did not include the addendum five and the, related to the, the parks part of the proposal.
So when we say confirm, I mean, are we just asking them, did you guys, is this your number? This is it? Or do we also provide the courtesy of talking to them as we did with SP to, to make sure? Because, because you know, for, for some of us, and especially me, when we, when we do over the phone, I, I might be really extremely bad, and, and your first choice is to, well, blonde's eliminated out. But maybe hopefully, you know, we have a one-on-one, one-on-one conversation. I could be somewhat clearer, clearer, and then be a little bit more, I wouldn't say persuasive, but, you know, justifying why I should be considered seriously. And so, you know, did that type of effort to, to reach out to the two?
No, I mean, frankly, by the time the committee got to the top two, we had, we had scoured those RFPs. We had had all of the discussions. We felt like the strength was really there with Republic and with SP. And so when we determined that Republic was, did not comply with the RFP, we wanted to affirm that we felt very confident that SP still met the needs that we were, we were looking for. And so we did not do any additional outreach to the others.
All right. Thank you, Renee. So here's my comments to, closing comments to my colleagues. And I don't know if, if the recommendation is to go back out or not, but at least for, for me, that process, and, and I don't know if it gets addressed now or later, but how we go about ranking and working on it, folks, I just think that we have to really relook at that in terms of who actually sits there and making those important decisions, especially how we want to make sure that our partners that are coming through an RFQ, RFP process is extremely transparent, because we get ding it on, on it all the time. And we deal with it from different projects, from different activities. And, and especially when we, the city, is, is responsible financially for all the contracts and for what we do. And this is an important contract. This is a, you know, five years plus more, and could be even longer. And this has nothing to do with SP or all, or the bidders that are out there that have come through. This is about how we want to make sure that, that we look at those that's going to sit and make important decisions, and that's going to be transparent. important decisions, and that's going to be transparent. And I have some concerns on that, on this particular issue. Secondly, if we've already gone through and we had to redo and change from our first recommendation to a second one, and if we've had the other two that have gone through, whether we believe that, you know, after we talk, and they're still not going to meet our standards, I believe that because it has changed from the original process to the original recommendation, and now to a second one, that it's worth it for us to then look at the other two. And I don't know if that takes a week, or whatever the conversation does, but this process has been going on for a while, so a month isn't going to make a much of a difference. The contract for the parking is extremely, I think we all agree, to have the right partners for the downtown. And so, I'm not ready to move forward on this just because of those two maintenance issues for me, and I'm not sure what, in a, to redo this, or how that gets addressed, but that's something that I believe that this body should be weighing on. Because RFPs and RFQs, we have seen it, and the main complaint has always been how transparent we are, and how we go about making sure that we look to address that issue. So, I'll listen to the rest of my council, see what those discussions will lead to, but those will be my two issues right now, if we were to vote on. I don't see me jumping on board.
Councilman Jong, did you make a motion in there?
No, I'll wait and see what I hear first, before I make any attempt on a motion right now.
All right, thank you. Councilman Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I also wanted to share my grave concerns that I have with the process and how this has gone on. I agree with my colleague from District One, that I wish that it had gone differently. I wish that things had gone better, as far as the process, and the committee, and the bids received, and the way those were prioritized, and the ones that were thrown out during the process, and selected, and then thrown out. And so, I just wanted to voice my concern about that, and I also want to wait and hear what my colleagues have to say about the whole situation, because I just find it regrettable that it hasn't been a more smooth process. You know, I just wanted also to kind of, I realize what we're talking about is a specific issue, as it relates to parking, and the bidders, and who's going to be selected to handle the parking, but I also wanted to kind of just talk about, well, let me start out this way. Is there somebody here from SP? Okay. Can I ask you a couple of questions? How many employees is it going to take to accomplish this job? Is it going to be similar to what ACE has been running?
Yes, and specifically regarding Addendum Five, our price proposal includes all of the staff outlined in Addendum Five.
Okay, so it's going to be the same staff, the same number of staff. Are ACE's employees, if you're to come in and take over, are ACE's employees disqualified from applying?
No, they're not disqualified.
At your company?
They're absolutely welcome to apply.
Okay.
In fact, if you don't mind my
No, please.
Continuing, in most cases, we retain many of the staff. We find it's, you know, the performance of the staff, whether they're reading
I'm sorry, can you come a little closer to the mic?
Sure, sorry.
Thank you.
I was going to say, in fact, we very often retain many of the staff members, and we find that issues of, you know, whether someone's reading paper, or on the phone, come down to supervision, not the individuals that are performing the job. So, our intent would be to hire as many of the existing staff that are qualified for the job as possible.
How do you plan to train these people differently? I mean, are you familiar with ACE's training methods? Have you used one of the garages and encountered an ignorant employee?
Yes.
That you've been appalled, you have?
Almost all of them.
Okay, and yet
I don't know if I'd refer to him as ignorant. Maybe expectations is a more
Mr. Redd, Mr. Shartan made the case that there was an employee sitting in a kiosk across the street from a restaurant, and didn't know that that was the restaurant the customer was asking for. That employee appears to be ignorant, that the sign that says Georgia's Shish Kebab is right in front of him, doesn't know it's there. It's not a put-down of that individual, it's that he was ignorant of his surroundings, or her surroundings. So, I guess my question for you is, if they're so bad, why would you rehire them?
Well, as I indicated, it would be a process. We'd have to interview them, we'd have to do background checks on them, and we'd have to evaluate whether or not they meet our qualifications. The, when it comes to training, your question about training, are, I can't speak to what ACE's training programs are, but our training program is that we have a training specialist that would come here and spend eight hours, classroom setting, training with each of the employees, probably have numerous training meetings. As far as making the employees aware of their surroundings, part of our proposal was to generate brochures for the staff to have. We truly envision the staff as being more ambassadors for downtown, that would be armed with, through us and our supervision, brochures that would include a list of the businesses in the area, on one side of a page, and on the backside of the page, directions to frequently asked destinations, so that they'd have at their fingertips the ability to answer questions for the public.
Okay, thank you. I'm satisfied, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, I'm just, I guess, a little bit frustrated by the whole thing, but I guess just kind of big picture, it's my belief, from being in this office for four hours, or four years, sometimes it feels like four hours, I say things, but for being in this office for four years, and getting to know my constituents, and canvassing the district, I've encountered more than a handful of people, when I'm walking my district, that is, that live a mile away from here, that say that they don't go downtown. And the reason why they don't go downtown is because of parking. And when I say, well, my goodness, parking, what's the problem? They don't like to pay. They don't like to pay. Whether there's an ignorant person in the box or not, doesn't determine whether they go downtown. They don't like to pay. And in cities like Bakersfield and Clovis, that have vibrant downtowns, with boutique hotels, and pubs, and restaurants, and bars, and hair salons, people go there because it's free to park there. And here, the people who have preceded us on this council have bonded the downtown parking situation to the hilt, and we now owe for years and years and years to park downtown. We have no choice. I'm sure that everyone in this room would like to have free parking, especially our business owners, would love to be able to open downtown Fresno up to free parking, but unfortunately, we can't do it because of the mistakes of the past, because of this body bonding out the parking. So, for the next 30 years, we have to charge people to park downtown. So, I mean, I want to hear what my colleagues have to say about the parking situation, about the bids, and whether they want to go and reject all bids, or go with the folks from SP, but the problem isn't who's in the kiosk, the problem is that people have to pay, and that's the number one problem, keeping people out of downtown, in my estimation. So, with that, I'm finished.
Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. So, I think this is a great discussion, and I think the first thing that we, that I want to do is certainly acknowledge the comments of my colleagues, that, you know, this process for sure was bungled, and that may, that may be saying it kindly. And so, it puts us in a bit of a quandary, because I definitely share some of the concerns of Councilmember Jong, with the appearance of the way the selection committee was. I can appreciate that, from a fairness standpoint, obviously, and a transparency standpoint, obviously, that that may have some concern, that the committee was stacked a certain way. So, I can certainly appreciate that. And then, you know, there have been other things that have happened, where we've had the, people weren't responsive, and whatnot, so we've had to eliminate folks for not being responsive, for, you know, technical reasons, but this is the process. And so, it really does leave us in a tough decision. So, first, I want to ask, you know, with all the issues that happen in the process, City Attorney, if we were to proceed forward today, are, is this, are we still within some realm of legal certainty that we can go forward?
Yes, Council. Ultimately, in response to an RFP, the council can choose the best value. It's a business decision. At this point, we believe that the process is legally defensible.
Okay, thank you, because I think we got to answer that question first, with all of the issues that happen. And so, then it moves to, you know, what do we do? You know, because obviously, this body can decide to discard the process, as has been suggested, or, you know, move forward, as has been suggested as well. And so, in weighing both of those, there's merit in both. And the merit from discarding the process is that, you know, we really get rid of the cloud that, to some degree, happened, even though we're still legal, there's a bit of a cloud over the process. But I tell you that the only concern I have with that, you know, it's almost like you're, you know, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, right? Because if we were to start all over, then I think that we have given some pretty unfair competitive advantages to any other proposers. And I have heartburn about that, too. You know, our respondents took a great deal of time, all of them, to respond and put together well-thought-out proposals, whether they, you know, were eliminated or not, they all gave a significant amount of information, that's all now public, that we all can see, and that, you know, anyone else could see, their likely competitors could see. And so, I think the challenge with starting this process all over is, the playing field is no longer equal at all. We really, in a sense, set up what otherwise would have been qualified applicants, and responsive applicants, in a position of disadvantage, for the ones that actually did follow the process correctly. And I'm not exactly sure that that's the intent, either. And like I said, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, right? There is an issue of the process here that I can certainly understand, and sometimes we muddle through these things, and we don't get it all right. But I think on the other side, I don't know if I'm prepared to start all over, and give really what could amount to competitive advantages to, you know, competitors in an industry. Parking's competitive. And I think that's the risk we run from starting over, and I don't necessarily know that that's the intent. You know, I don't have a stake one way or the other, I think the important, I think the decision is important, I think a selection committee was chosen, I think that staff, I think our parking manager said that he felt pretty confident with the selection that we made. You know, although we don't blindly follow staff, everyone in this building knows that, we do rely on them for their expert opinion. And I know that my, our friends at the P-Bid obviously had a pretty strong position about where you wanted to go, and listen, we took that into consideration, too. But I'm fairly confident that this is not a, you know, we get paid a whole, whole lot of money to make some really, some really tough decisions sometimes, and this is, yeah, tongue-in-cheek, this was a, this was, this is a tough decision, but I think the alternative of starting over is probably not in the best interest of the rest of the competitive field. I don't think it's fair to them, to the folks that actually met the guidelines of the process and stayed through to the end. So, with that, I'm relatively comfortable with staff's recommendation. It's not perfect, and, you know, we, you know, I don't think, I think we learned a lot from this process, Bruce. I think that, you know, had we had to do this again, I think that we learned some things that we will, you know, take into future processes, but I don't think we would, I think the same argument could be made about fairness, if we started over at this point, to the folks that were responsive. So, with that, I'm, you know, unless I hear something wildly different from my colleagues, but I'm always open, I think I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation to move forward today.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. I really have one fundamental question, and that is, are we comparing apples to apples? And Mr. Dowd has indicated that we're not, Ms. Smith indicates that we have, so if there's some orange, or some other thing than an apple that you're aware of, I'd like to hear about it, and a response from Ms. Smith, if we're not comparing apples to apples, that's really a vital link for me, is, are we all on the same page as far as the RFP? Mr. Dowd, do you want to, or you don't have to, it's really your choice.
Sir, we do not believe we're comparing apples to apples. Our writing set that out specifically. Any one of the ACE people can address such things as elevator expenses that were not addressed, the number of people at Woodward Park as roading park, special events, supervisor for those tasks which are not included. I understood that it was a blanket, we've done it, but I would challenge to move this for two weeks, and get us both in a room to look item by item. If they're so confident that they've addressed every item, if they've compared apples to apples, then clearly, why would you go with nine million when you can go with six million? But we don't believe that they did. It's interesting, the Assistant City Manager says we scoured, we scoured the RFPs. It took us to point out they missed a $2 million item. They scoured the RFPs, and Republic was two million out of round, because they weren't comparing apples to apples. It was the parks, the Denim Five, Republic did not do it at all. We pointed out, that's a $2 million ticket item. We suggest that it was the process that led to this, the audience was not receptive. When they said we've interviewed, we've received not one phone call, let alone an invitation to come and talk, not one phone call. They talk about these complaints, put this over and ask, how many have they sent to ACE? What have they told ACE? We're your partner, we want to be your partner. If somebody thinks that we're failing in some respect, tell us, let us address it. Who would take a 20% cut in fee unless they're on board with you? We're truly on board. All we're asking for is a process that's fair, and I understand the Acting President's concern about kicking something over, I truly understand that. But here, who was the audience? Who was the audience?
Well, you know, perhaps a more specific question. The items you mentioned, was that a voluntary concession, or just something you did outside the contract, to facilitate this relationship, the things you mentioned?
Things that we did truly were to facilitate the relationship. When the city would ask us, we would take into consideration, was there any way that we could do it, we would do it. And if you want to ask specific questions, for instance, Mr. Bashin, who's the day-to-day person, I'm sure could tell you things that are very specific of how they tried to have this wonderful relationship, with a partner that they thoroughly enjoy, and how do we make it work? We know it's a tough time. We know that people do not like to pay fees for parking. There may have been someone who was less informed, would be the term I would use, as far as where Georgia's was located in relationship to a parking booth. It's not a perfect world out there with our people, we work as hard as we can to make sure that they're informed. Clearly, mistakes will be made by people, day in and day out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Renee, do you want to address apples to apples?
Okay, in the RFP itself, it kind of outlines the selection process and the evaluation criteria. And the selection committee evaluated the proposals in various categories, and we actually have spreadsheets and metrics where we scored each of those. It was based on cost, ability to meet stated service requirements, past performance and experience, conformance with the terms of the RFP, the things that we were looking for out of the RFP, and financial stability. As far as apples to apples, one of the steps that the committee took, that we didn't necessarily need to take, but we looked at the first year operating costs for every single one of the submissions. And within those submissions, there is not any two that are exactly alike. Just like ACE is pointing out, that SP Plus didn't specifically call out elevator maintenance in an account in an account, ACE also did not specifically call out certain maintenance items related to the cleaning and things like that in the garage. However, if you go deeper within their RFPs, both of them spoke to both of those types of items. So, you know, so the, you know, if you say apples to apples, what we were looking at was making sure that every, you know, that everyone that we were looking at would be able to meet the criteria that we outlined as far as overall those five items.
So apples to apples or specificity to specificity, you feel comfortable was addressed by all the responding parking agencies?
Yes. Some better than others.
Okay, thank you. As far as my colleague who's gone, a question on the parking situation. Unfortunately, this body here has been stuck with numerous bad decisions in the past, and bonding the parking would probably qualify in that. But we have to deal with it, and we deal with it the best way we can as a body, as a group up here, and with Bruce at the helm to help us along. So I don't really have a magic wand to take care of Clint's people. So I'll leave that to Bruce, if you wanted to address that. But thank you for your, did you want to add something, sir?
My name is Steve Burton. I'm the President of ACE Parking. And let's boil this down, apples to apples as simple as it can possibly be. Is this on? Okay, sorry. There you go. Sorry. If Republic missed Addendum 5, and their five-year budget is $6.5 million, and Standard's budget is $6 million, and they partially missed it, they missed it by 70%, and that's the number. If you disqualified Republic for not responding to Addendum 5 correctly by missing it 100%, how can you not look at Standard Plus and say, "They missed it by 70%? The requirement specifically said booth one, booth two, open. Booth one, booth two, open. Events." If you go to their schedule and the page of their proposal, one booth, both parks, okay? The operating hours. They are off on their number, so you can't compare apples to apples. But the reality is, is if you didn't answer the Addendum 5 100%, how are they even at this point? It is a clouded process, but it isn't apples to apples, and their numbers are off. And I think our recommendation of sitting down, taking two weeks to look at this, it won't take an hour to sit down, budget by budget, with both companies and see where the right numbers are and where the wrong numbers are. And as Council members, you will have the opportunity to then decide what is right and what is wrong, and give us a chance to interview, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Council President.
All right. Well, Bruce was punched in next, so I'll give him a second to get back to his microphone.
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. Yeah, it's interesting, this conversation, because in a lot of ways, it's deja vu. We did this four years ago with the airport, and the airport made the same recommendation to you that they'd had a longstanding relationship, but they felt it was a time to make a change. And a lot of this, in some ways, is very subjective. That is why it's an RFQ/RFP. Counsel, I have to take, and I'm trying to figure the nice way of putting it, exception to terms such as stacking or transparency, because in a lot of ways, you are questioning the ethics and the integrity of my staff. And with that, I take real pause and concern. Every time we go through this with a different vendor, and we've gone through this with parking, and we've done this with this particular vendor who made the same arguments the last time with the airport, it always comes down to whether it was stacked, or it was fair, or whatever. Well, the reality is, ACE has been our contractor for a number of years. In a lot of ways, they were the inside guy. And if they were meeting the expectations of the city, and more importantly, our partners with the P-Bid, and we are part of the P-Bid, then they probably would have a leg up on everyone else, and there'd maybe be somebody else in here arguing that it was an inside deal, or somebody had an advantage over us. Well, when you're the incumbent, you generally have the advantage. Somewhere along the line, both in the case of the airport, as well as now, they lost that advantage. And that is nothing that staff did, that is nothing that the P-Bid partners did. That, at the end of the day, was ACE's inability to, instead of waiting for someone to complain, should have been out asking, "How are we doing? How well are we performing? Are you satisfied with our performance, P-Bid? Are you satisfied with the customer response? Are you doing secret shopper surveys? Are we doing this? What do we need?" Never. Then we come into this conversation, and we're talking about whether or not we were transparent. Well, we all know that anytime we go through these processes, my staff does everything it can to be as transparent and above-board as it can be. And with Mr. Doyle sitting here, he can attest to the fact and comment to the fact that we ran a tight process. So Counsel, I know this is a difficult decision, but at the end of the day, you're hearing from our partners, our customers, those who are businesses that are most impacted by the level of service that's being provided, and they are telling you, and my staff is telling you, like the airport staff told you, it's time for a change. And therefore, Counsel, I would strongly recommend that we move forward with this and approve the recommendation that staff has presented to you. Thank you.
Counselman Brand.
I've heard from all my colleagues. I'm confident that the process that we did go through was valid. I think it's never easy, it's fairly complex in these situations, but, you know, based on people I trust, and again, trying to find the truth, and it's not an easy decision, but I'm going to make a motion that we go forward with the staff recommendation for SP on the, as a parking vendor.
Motion and a second. Counselman Jeong.
I was going to respond to the City Manager, but I'll let it go. I'm ready to vote.
Renee, I'm going to ask a couple of questions. We have a motion and a second, and most of my questions have been answered from, that's the benefit of getting to go last. Most of these guys have already asked the questions I was going to ask. But when we do an RFP, well, for starters, let me just make a statement. I agree with Counselman Jeong, we need to, we need to take a look at how we do our processes a little bit better, but that's got really nothing to do with this particular item. I've actually seen it over the months that I've been at Council and thought that many times before, several times before. So I think we do need to revisit our process a little bit. So I agree with Counselman Jeong and Counselman Olivier on that. The one, there's only, and I'm ready to go forward today. I've heard, I think, what I need to hear, but I do have a question. In Addendum 5, that's been referenced several times, if we have, if we have, say, at a place where there's three gates, and one contractor bid all three gates, I'm going to have a person at all three gates, and I've got to pay that person whatever it is, minimum wage or whatever it is, and then the other contractor only bids on having a person at two of those three gates, and then come to find out, once we, if we award the contract to that person, and then they find out that, oh, I'm expected to have a person at all three gates, then do they change material, they change the material charge to us as a city? Or how does that work?
Basically, we, one of the questions that we went back and we asked SP is, will you work with us within the dollars identified in the contract to meet the staffing needs that we're going to need across the board? And they did agree to do that. As far as the addendum goes, there's some, there is always some flexibility in those hours and those times. And if this was coming down to the fact that the decision was based totally on the dollar amounts and the costs of each of the contracts, then I think that that would be of much higher concern to the committee and to all of you and your decision. But it wasn't based just on the cost. It was based on other qualitative factors related to the RFP. So at the end of the day, we went back and we looked at if the staffing within SP's proposal was going to meet what we needed overall, and we believe that it will.
Okay. All right, cool. Thanks, Renee. All right, then, let's see. I think we might have to take. Bob, I can give you 60 seconds.
First, we know that P-Bid wanted to get into the parking business, so we go back to the process. But more importantly, more importantly, the Acting City Manager just tells you, you know, "We had a question. Did you bid three or two? Oh, you only bid two, but you'll work with us when we need three." Where are you getting locked in in a five-year agreement that now you're starting off by saying, "But we'll work together." The request was bid three. We bid three. Clearly, SP bid two. Staff recognizes it, so now it's kind of this, "Well, we'll work with you." I would suggest that clearly, the contract they signed is the bid they submitted to you. Thank you for my indulgence.
All right, Counsel. Screen is clear. We have a motion and a second to adopt staff recommendations. Let's vote electronically on this one. It's been a while, so make sure you know which button's what. All right. Motion passes five to two with Counselman Olivier and Counselman Jeong voting no. Thank you, everybody. We are, we kind of went over our time. We're going to turn to an item. The 1015 item. Let's see which one. Of the renaming of the street, which is 1015, item ID, or the ID for this item is 14-497.
Counsel President Brandow, Mike Sanchez, Development Resources staff. The matter before is a street name change filed by Daniel Eisenberg of Irrtech USA. Other requested to rename portions of home, back, and pine avenues to North Irrtech Way and covers just a small quarter-mile section and is generally located at the, on the east side of Maple Avenue between McKinley and Corridor alignment.
Street renaming. Thanks, Bruce, for this.
Irrtech is one of the top five irrigation manufacturers in the world, and with over, serving over 90 countries worldwide. Irrtech has recently relocated one of their offices into Fresno, and with that, and with that, with that commitment, they've also decided to purchase property for future development within this particular area. In addition to that, Irrtech has made several contributions to the local community. To sum up, as indicated, Irrtech made a commitment to develop their offices here. They've contributed mightily to local jurisdictions or charities. And both staff and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project. Here you can see where the project is located, on the east side of Maple. Here is specific where the street name change will occur. You see just a very small portion. The area that's vacant on your map is basically a future proposal that Irrtech plans to develop over the next couple of years. As I indicated, both staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval of the project, and both the, Mr. Daniel Eisenberg of Irrtech USA is here to further speak on the matter. That will conclude our presentation.
First, we're going to go to any members of the public that would like to address this item. So if that's you, please step up and take the microphone for three minutes.
Good morning, President Brandow, members of the Council, Joe Guacalherto representing Irrtech USA. Mr. Eisenberg is available. He'll also be making a short presentation. As staff has pointed out, Irrtech USA acquired the property on North Maple Avenue about three years ago, has committed about, at this point, about four and a half, $6 million into the property to redevelop it. They have made a commitment to develop their North American headquarters here in Fresno. As part of the overall development process, buildings were demolished, new road was constructed with the intent of developing an industrial area in the heart of the city of Fresno that's been overlooked for many years. With that in mind, to reinforce the identification of Irrtech USA, which is one of the four largest drip irrigation manufacturers in the world, the request to rename the street that services the facility, the headquarters, and the future development to Irrtech USA. Mr. Eisenberg is available, and will make a presentation also. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your assistance in this matter. As was already said, Irrtech is a global company, Italian-owned. Fresno is our headquarters. We have purchased this land a few years ago. Part of our project was to redevelop what used to be an industrial wasteland, basically, and we'll turn it into the Irrtech Business Park. So these streets did not exist before. That's why, as the final step in this first phase is to make them Irrtech Way, would give us a nice corporate visibility, really show our parent company that we've made the right choice to invest in Fresno and to stay in Fresno as our corporate location for the U.S. market. We are investing heavily here. We believe this is the right place for us to be. We're creating a lot of jobs in the area and hope to contribute to the growth of the city and to the growth of the area where we are.
Thank you. Yeah, well, we have a procedure, so now we're going to go out to the public, and then we can definitely call you back up. Barbara, I know you turned in a card just now, so you can come up next. And if somebody wants to come up after Barbara, you don't have to turn in a card, but you'll get three minutes as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm so glad we have a charter of the city of Fresno that we're supposed to follow. And I thank Mr. Baines, Mr. X-I-O-N-G, Mr. Baines, I'm disappointed, and the rest of you that voted no. Now, my side of town over there, it got East Church, East California, East Jensen, East Bardell, East Grove, how in the hell we get to be Eastern Southwest Fresno when these people are East? See, you got our money over there somewhere in your district, and Mr. Baines is not doing our district. That's why I'm calling for a recall, because he's not protecting us on our Southeast Fresno. Now, this gentleman here is coming here, he gonna put shopping center, he gonna put jobs, he gonna put things in there in Northeast for his district. Now, how come we didn't have something like this in our district and get those signs off and over there that the Planning Commission that put them over there? And Brandy Orr had a meeting I went to, she said, "We got 77 district boundaries overlapping." So that whole election process is illegal. You guys listen to Mr. Rudd? He's not, he didn't been in every department around here. He's going with swans and whatever they say. We got you guys up here elected to make decisions. You the policymaker, not him. Thank you very much. And I got a lot of more time I can talk on this here, and I think I will, because we're not being treated fair. We're supposed to have Southwest Fresno, we got all them buns over there, Southwest Fresno, 1, 2, 3, 4, even Chinatown, even that merger, 1 or 2, and this guy's got the East over here. How do we stretch way over here to... here, how do we stretch way over here to East on McKinley, and that's the other half of our McKinley where our boundary district goes with Baines over there, never said nothing, with James Audrey then put up in there when he was city manager? All that stuff is illegal and is crooked, they all should be in jail. Everybody up here that vote on these projects, knowing that that's not Southwest Fresno, and I'm 67, I was born over there, I watched this place grow, and they going on like it's nothing happened. Now, Swanson got them all around here, gonna change the codes, change everything, and do everything for her, it's not fair. You gotta do something, thinking for yourself, if you can't think for yourself, get out of here. And I'm talking to you, Mr. Rudd, and the rest of you guys that can't follow the rules and regulations and procedures in this place. I know damn well I wasn't born in no Southeast Fresno, and I've been out there 67 years ago, now they want to come and sell all of our land, give our land away, give our money away, put us on the fast track. I thank this man for coming up here for this project. Yes, approving, it shows a point. Y'all don't know your directions, you need to go back to school, North, East, South, and West, simple as that. I have my Masters in Government, California School Board Association, I got my Associate Science Agreement Human Service, I got my Certificate of Police and Natural Intelligence Council, and I worked for West Fresno School District all them years. We got a West Fresno School District, which I'm running for now, and then I ran for the mayor and the city council, city of Fresno, that's a conflict of interest, the boundaries. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right, up here at council, that's in District 7, and so Councilman Olivier?
Thank you, Council President. I want to be respectful of everyone's time, because I know we have a, a bigger item coming up after this, but you know what, to, to us in the 7th District, this is a very big deal. If you haven't had a chance to, to go out there and actually see what Irrtech has done, this is what the city has done, they've, they've worked with redevelopment, and what Irrtech has done, they've come in, they've built a, a beautiful facility, manufacturing, industrial manufacturing, they're going to continue to expand on, on the property that's out there. They are a company that's come from Europe, they're very interested in putting Fresno people to work, they're very interested in selling their products to people here in our city and throughout the valley and the whole, the entire state of California. So if you haven't had a chance to go out there, Daniel Eisenberg there is, is the person in charge that you need to talk to. Go see the, the facility, see the multimillion-dollar equipment that they've invested in our community, they're going to, they're interested in, in looking at partnering with us on the park, Martin Ray Riley Park, which is just right around the corner from them, and they're going to be a community partner for years and years and years to come. I, I can't express enough how excited I am about what they're doing. So I think it's, it's fantastic that this area that they've revitalized on their, you know, on their own, I think that we, we commemorate what they've done in their commitment to our community by renaming those streets Irrtech Way. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that. Screen is clear. I would just like to add then that I also appreciate Irrtech coming in and employing some of our citizens and the, and the ideas and the plan and the strategy you have for your business. I really appreciate, have no problem renaming this street Irrt, or naming the street Irrtech. So we have a clear screen, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations.
I also wanted to thank the Planning Department, especially Mike Sanchez, thank you for, for your efforts on this, excellent work, thank you.
Did we, I'm going to ask our clerk, did we, for the 10 a.m. item, the first one, 14-457, were, were, did we have guests for that item also?
No, I'm unaware if we have people here to speak on that.
Let me see if, did we have anybody here that wanted to speak on item 14-457? That was a roll-off collection services, non-exclusive franchise? Well, Jerry, if we don't have public here for that, I'm going to put you on hold, and I'm going to bring another item in that we have some of our public here for, is that okay? Thank you. All right, we're going to go to the 1030 item, which a lot of folks are here for. Oh, no, excuse me, I don't think it's 1030, let me see, did I get that wrong? Give me a second here. No, no, Lee, it wasn't Grannis. 10 o'clock, number two, there you go, thank you, Blong. This is a hearing that we've talked about a couple of different times, we're going to continue it today, it's continued from a previous day to consider a rezone application in District 7. And so, Mike, I believe you're going to walk us through this?
Yes.
All right.
Counsel President Brandow, members of the commission, I'm sorry, council. This project before you, the rezone application, is located on the west side of Winery Avenue between Washington and McKenzie and covers approximately .62 acres. This matter's continued from October, October 9th, and during that hearing, council directed staff to come up with some, a couple of alternatives to the project at hand. The project before you is a rezone request to R1 zoning that will allow for, potential for three different, three new residential lots. The options that staff considered... Excuse me, counsel. The options that the staff considered was, first off, the application before you is a request for R1 zoning and three new residential lots. That is, that is, that is the project before you and is consistent with our current plans and policies. The options that were considered were to go to a lesser density, anything less than the proposed three lots would require additional plan amendment to be added to this process. Secondly, there are two ways to get to that approach, if that's what the council desires. Communications between staff and the applicant up to this point have indicated that the applicant still wishes to pursue the three additional new lots, however, the applicant has indicated that they're willing to limit the new, three new homes to single-story development.
Mike, you may have to do it the old-fashioned way, hit the down button.
Okay, very briefly, let me just go over the, the project for you, I've described. Project here is located on the east side of Winery, or west side of Winery between Washington and McKenzie Avenues. The current planned use, current planned use, planned land use is medium-density residential, which allows for up to 10 units to the acre. Here's existing zoning on the site, which is RA, and you can see it's surrounded by R1 zoning to the immediate west and R1B to the north and to the east.
Mike, get a little closer to the microphone, please.
Sorry.
I know you're trying to do a lot there.
Now, this, this shot before you is basically the proposed lotting pattern for the subject property. As you can see, the three new lots, the lot on the north end will be approximately 8,800 square feet in size, the lot on the bottom of the corner will be about 7,200 square feet in size, and the two interior lots will be approximately 6,000 square feet in size. This slide clearly shows if the project is approved, what the lotting pattern would look like, as you can see the four lots along Winery Avenue in comparison to the existing lotting pattern to the south of McKenzie Avenue. And you can, as depicted by this slide, it's very well consistent with the lots to the south of the subject property. This is a very interesting slide, at the last hearing, there were some discussions about sidewalks in this general vicinity. The areas outlined in red clearly depict the existing sidewalks in the, in the neighborhood. As you can see, the area in green is what would be proposed from this project, the sidewalks to be added, and as you can see, it'd be, it would be connecting the existing sidewalks to the immediate west. Should the project be approved, staff will certainly look for ways to clearly close that gap between the sidewalks along Washington and McKenzie Avenues. Here's a photograph of the subject site on the lower right-hand side, as you can see the curb and gutter on the subject site, but you can also see further to the west, the existing sidewalks on some of the properties, and this is looking west on McKenzie Avenue. Here's a subject site looking north on Winery Avenue, you can see the vacant lot there along with the curb gutter, curb and gutter there. And here's a subject site on the north side of the property, looking west on Washington, as you can see just to the back of the existing sidewalk that's to the west. And this is looking directly across the street from the subject property where you don't have any sidewalks, but you can certainly see folks using the existing pathways to traverse the neighborhood. And this area, a few blocks to the south of the subject site, where you have an established residential area with sidewalks. One of the issues mentioned in the last round was the density, the current project before you this evening, or this afternoon, clearly shows a density of about six units to the acre, which is consistent with both the 2025 general plan and the medium-density designation. The area, the lotting pattern I showed earlier to the south of McKenzie Avenue basically has the same type of density range, developed at a density of about six units to the acre. This slide here shows the proposed improvements for the subject property, the area in green shows the new sidewalks that will be proposed, the areas in brown show the new sewer lines that would be required to be hooked up, and the blue indicates the new water lines. The area crossed hashed in red would be the underground, the underground, you know, the utilities that would be required for this project. The area in, that's yellow there would be basically a new street length that would be proposed as, as part of this project. This, this slide basically shows the impact fees for the three new lots, roughly about $9,000 per lot, and I would like to note that due to the Build Act that was passed by the council a few years ago, this project would receive a credit of about $9,000 for one of those lots. And staff would like to close by indicating that, one, that the environmental assessment is appropriate in the financial conformity, and that the council approved the proposed R1 zoning of the subject site. And staff is available to answer any questions, as well as both applicant and the neighborhoods are here as well to speak on the matter.
Thank you, Mike. We're going to go out to the public now, and we've already visited this item before, most of us are pretty familiar with it, so I'm going to ask the public when you come up, and many of you in the public have already been in front of the council before, so if you could keep your comments as brief as possible and get to your, get to your point, your main point, and, because we've heard this item now, I think, two times already. So our first one is Sarah Rojas, is Sarah here?
Councilman, my name is Sarah Rojas, I live at 4909 East McKenzie. We support the infill, we also support the building of two homes on the lot, but not three homes on 19,000 square feet. We don't want 6,000 square foot lots and a 7,200 square foot lot in our neighborhood. Lots in our neighborhood are much larger and not typical of these small lots. The developer was quoted as saying that building two homes would be unprofitable. They are making money at the expense of changing our neighborhood. They don't think about the children that will live here in those small lots, they don't think about the neighbors that have been there for a long time. We feel that two houses on that lot would be sufficient, but I know that they're counting the dollar signs, and they should face reality and just make two homes there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Floanne Hunter?
Thank you, I, I'm Flo Hunter. I've been in Fresno since 1947, and here on McKenzie, I've lived for 49 years. This street had railroads running down it when I moved there. And over time, the tracks were removed and eventually islands were made running east and west. It is an average, quiet neighborhood. Excuse me. In my opinion, to build three small houses on one lot would be foolish, there wouldn't be space for yards, children would have no place to play, except in the street. And think of the cars. These houses would be facing east, right down the north side of the islands, not north and south like all of the rest of them. There are no other houses on Winery, from Tulare to Belmont, facing east or west. We're not against infill, it's great, but please take a look at the neighborhood, it's that kind of crowded, helter-skelter building that causes slums. Three houses on one lot is just too many. I'd like to say that Mr. Rudd mentioned that all of the houses in that area were typical 6,000 and 7,000 square feet. Well, not all of them, from Sarah's house on Winery all the way to Peach, which probably a mile, from Belmont to at least McKenzie, where the bike path is. These houses are all what they call a quarter, they call it a commercial half acre. And I measured my lot a long time ago, it was 120 feet by 120 feet, which should be a half acre. Three houses on one lot is just too many, why not build two houses, one facing McKenzie and one facing Winery? It would be a lot more sensible. I...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to...
My time is up.
Yeah, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Rebecca Agira? Rebecca? Okay.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having me here.
Can you step, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having me here and for your time, and I'm here concerning this lot also. And rezoning is not necessary if only the two houses would fit everybody's needs and concerns. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for being here and listening to what these lovely neighbors have to say about their community. You know, they've lived there for a long time, and they're proud of their neighborhood. We want to keep it that way. I support infill, but I don't want new blight developed. Don't allow rezoning to this area. I can see two houses built on this area, but not three. That will change the whole structure and really be a bad idea. I thank you for your time and your patience in listening, and may the Lord be in your day. Thank you.
Thank you, Constance. We have Ruben Silva.
Okay, the developer wants to build three houses, but the neighborhood wants to compromise and put two. They realize that three is just one house too many, and people have proposed two. Why can't the developer compromise also? We didn't say one, we said two. He wants to put three. All it is for him is business. For us is sight and for our children. I think two is good enough, not three. Let's compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Next, we have Cindy Silva.
I agree with the others that infill is a good thing, but putting as many houses as they're planning is way too much and not in keeping with the neighborhood as it is. I've looked at houses that have been built on Tulare and Belmont, and they're in the same price range as these houses will be, and they've been empty for about a year. And I watched one that was built, and when they finally got it built, it was still sitting there. Kids are growing up in our neighborhood. There's a whole new generation growing up there. So it's not exactly the older people. We're getting newer people, babies, children, otherwise. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we have Barbara Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. President. You've supposed to have been president a long time ago. The ladies already, and the gentlemen's already have spoke about what they want for their neighborhood. One lady says southwest, east over there. One said east-west over there. And it's a conflict. That's what I'm telling you. They got our southwest over here and southeast over there, so all our money going. But my question is, why are we letting these people from this Development and Resource Management Department come here and bring these proposals when we're supposed to be the government of the city of Fresno? That's those capital improvement projects, those are the ones that up there that we got to pay money, in one to two, to borrow money to run this business with, and we had to pay a lot of money back, the city of Fresno. Why are we the government that the people elected here to run the business for the city of Fresno? And we got two departments up in here. One upstairs is calling all the shots, making all the decisions with the planning commission because the post office said the planning commission bring those addresses to them, and they just put them. Brandy said we got 77 boundaries overlapping right now, and nobody addressing these issues because you guys are not concerned. Something is wrong up here. Now, if they recall everybody on this stand and the people, because we still in America, we can do this here, and I will put the money up there and I will force it. All except you, Mr. X I O N G, and you, Mr. Caparillo, because you can say Caparillo. That's how I pronounce your name. You told me to do it. Cassel, you've been knowing about this a long time. You told me you couldn't bring it. Before it, you got to let somebody else do it. And you see Mr. Bain's not bringing it, so I'm bringing it, and I've been bringing it all the time. Those signs say southeast, and we got a West Fresno school district that don't make sense to me. And then I see this land got agriculture. Now, this is where Mr. X I O N G's coming in, if you get to be the board supervisor. His job is going to be to protect agriculture. Now, how is he going to protect agriculture when we got this illegal people up here, to my opinion only, because we still the city of Fresno? We're not owned by corporations, these corporate capitalist people up here, or these enterprise people, or these, what you call this, know what a S, F franchise? We still own the local government, the city of Fresno. We still got to work for the people. Now, we got all these people coming here, it's their neighborhood, but what I'm seeing, they put those street lots there, and pretty soon they're going to come through there and tear all their houses up. And the new people come in, which they bringing all of these folks in to put them in, buying that land dirt cheap, and bringing their folks in, pretty soon we're going to be in another country right here in America. Matter of fact, right here in Fresno, Alan Archer used to talk about the tale of two cities. I wonder which two cities he's talking about. Is it in America? I'm going to get up here and let you make your decision, but you got some people up here, they did take time, and they property owners. One lady says she's been here for 47, since 1947. Their opinion should work. And you can't tell us what to say up here. You cut it out, Mr. Bayou. We can talk about it on our three minutes, anything we want to. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is Mike Hamsey with Harvest International, Inc., three years in business in Fresno, California. We're not going to beat a dead horse, just after the recommendation that you guys advised us last week to go back and revisit the project. To do two lots based on the cost of the development, the price of the homes will be way higher than what the market can observe, and we won't be able to develop it as two lots. You asked us to compromise. We did compromise. We did not put apartment on the site. We did not put four homes, but the remainder, we did the three homes. 6,000-square-foot lots are similar size to any development in the city of Fresno, city of Clovis. We feel like we're following the rules, we're doing everything that the city is asking us to do, and we worked with the staff, we worked with the planning department, they all approved, recommended approval. We look at this project as a first project that the city, everybody in the city and the developers are looking for. If we shoot this project down, then we have to go back, and we wasted millions of dollars doing general plan, we're putting it aside, and it's not going to be a good example for the city of Fresno. We recommend approval, and I'll be very happy to answer any question regarding this project. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is Dave Herb, 3263 East Tinnington Boulevard. Obviously, I am not a neighbor, but I am a longtime resident of Fresno with an interest in public policy, and I have to say, observing this issue that I was not planning to speak on, it occurs to me that this is a very interesting case study, which, if it wasn't so sad, it would be funny. We're trapped in a situation here where the council is sincerely trying to do what's right. You're listening to your constituents and trying to find a compromise. Staff likewise has stood on its head, trying to analyze the situation and the different elements, looking for something that can be both in conformance with your adopted plans and policies and would work for the neighborhood. The developer, God help him, is just trying to do what he perceived as you telling him you wanted him to do, based on adopted plans and policies. And the residents are sticking up for what they believe to be the best interest of their neighborhood. What a mess. And yet, we've not been able to find common ground. I, for one, from my perspective, hope when the dust settles, you will take staff's recommendation. And it occurs to me that it's unfortunate in this kind of environment that there isn't some way we could figure out how to establish an ombudsman office here that could honestly try and bridge the gaps between the city and the developer and the neighborhoods and talk some sense into folks in looking for more constructive ways to do a compromise. And I'm not looking for a job here. I don't do that kind of deal, but this is a painful issue. I hope you accept staff's recommendation. I think they've come closest to a constructive resolution.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Saigon. I'm the developer in question. We went back two weeks ago based on your recommendation and actually worked with Bruce to figure out what we could do to compromise. My understanding is, and perhaps Bruce could verify this, we cannot build two lots. It either has to be three lots or none. That's really what it's come down to. And there's no evil doer here making millions of dollars on this. This is just a small piece of dirt that we would like to actually fix for the neighborhood. Year after year, ever since we've purchased this property, the same neighbors on a monthly basis called the city, complain about prostitutes on that lot, garbage being dumped. We have no problem going in and cleaning it up, but if blight is their concern, I think it's easy to note that new homes who are going to have owner occupants in them are going to help beautify the neighborhood. Furthermore, the city is requiring us to spend about $200,000 just to fix sidewalks, build sidewalks, and so on and so forth. So as you can see, price of the houses, if you really do the math, we will be lucky if we break even, let alone make any money. But again, I would encourage you to ask these questions from city staff that is experts on this. Put aside the emotions, put aside issues or assumptions that are brought up by people, but rather talk to city staff, and I would encourage you to approve this. And our focus all along has been to build jobs, beautify neighborhoods. We've done that. Eldorado Park, we did a couple of projects, and I'm proud of all of our projects. Not only do we take gang-infested, drug-infested buildings and clean them up physically, but we replaced these empty homes, empty apartments, with productive students, productive families, which I'm proud to say we've done. With that said, by the way, I'm open for questions if the council has any.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to say that if you take a good look at the area, you'd see that on Willow, the cars going home line up at Belmont. And some of them have found out that there is no stopping all the way to Chestnut. If they speed down Chestnut, to Chestnut, without any stop or even a slow at Winery, then they won't, they go right to the freeway off of Chestnut instead of waiting in line down there on Willow. And another thing, it's that kind of helter-skelter building that causes slums. Please, take a good look, because McKenzie on the north side, for the right turn, dead ends right there in front of those houses.
Flo? Flo? Floanne?
Yes.
I'm Clint. I'm your council member, and if, I'm going to present next, and I do apologize for interrupting, but the rule is that people can only speak once. So if I need some backup, I'll call you up. Will that work? Will that be okay with you? Okay.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Masato Yasuda. I'm one of the investors for this project. I think we want three lots, and those people have two lots. I respect their opinions, but I think the most important issue is about this empty land. Again, I'd like to stress, leaving this land as empty as it is for years is a sin. That brings in a lot of hazards, you know, criminal activities, literings. You have to make a decision today. You know, we have been waiting for too long, and I really appreciate you make a decision today. We will follow whatever it is. Number two, I respect other people's opinions. So I understand some people have their own idea. However, I should say, I just wonder, they are really represent the neighborhood, because, you know, we see the same faces every time in a meeting. Actually, I invited more than 300 residents to a public hearing twice, and those people showed up, and they opposed to our idea. I respect that. Then, you know, what happened to the remaining majority of the people? I think you should think about what they're thinking. You know, they probably, at least they do not disagree with the proposal. They do not want to decline a proposal. And in fact, I believe many of them probably support a proposal. So I really appreciate you think about those people of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Cindy, Cindy, can you help her a little? There you go.
Thank you. My name is Dominga Bustamante, and I reside at 4886 East McKenzie. I'd like to clarify something a gentleman just got through saying. He said there was a compromise from four houses to three houses. That's not true. There's already one existing house there. So if they build three more houses, it'll be four houses on two lots. So that's why people are asking for two houses. We want to compromise to the two houses. Another thing is, I'm concerned of the safety of the public there. There's a school that is two blocks away from this set proposal. There's children walking to school, there's children riding bicycles to school, and added more traffic to that, the children would not be very safe. We have a lot of bikers going through there. We have no bike lanes. We live in a density, poor neighborhood. And to add all this to our neighborhood would be really, I can't even tell you what I want to tell you. Anyway, the problem is the public safety, and we need to have somebody make a study about this traffic. A traffic safety study is in order before you can give these people the go-ahead to go ahead and build this home there. We have a lot of walkers go through there. There are citizens that walk through there every day, senior citizens, regular people just walk through there, bicycles ride through there. We even have the Roosevelt Track Team go through there. It's very high-density street already, and every home there in the area have two cars or more. So I think that a traffic study is in order before you go ahead and rezone this area. Also, that corner would be perfect for the city to make us a little park, a park where we could congregate, seniors could congregate, families could come together, children could play, and build a basketball area. This I ask selfishly, because next door to my house is... This I ask selfishly because next door to my house is a rental and they have a hoop they play basketball on. Well, I have to go through the idea that this is not a good idea for me to have that basketball court next to me. They have broken my windows. They have kicked in my fence so that they can crawl across and get the basketball. But of course, these renters are better than my less renters. The less renters that were there, they grew marijuana. They had 50 pot plants planted in the backyard. And thank God for the sheriff's department who came in and took care of the problem. Not the city police, but the sheriff's department. But I do want to leave you with the fact that we do need a traffic study to see how much more traffic that corner can abide. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward today and talk about this issue? Yes, ma'am. Have you spoken yet? You haven't spoken yet, have you? Oh, you can't do it. All right then, looks like we're done with the public. Councilman Olivier, you're up first.
Thank you very much. I would also like to thank our staff. I'd like to thank Mike Sanchez. I'd like to thank Bruce. I'd like to thank Jennifer. I'd like to thank the city manager and his team. It's been a, a long and difficult process and I know that staff's been very dedicated to, to making sure that this project can come forward with all the information that the residents need and that we need up here. And so thank you for all your diligence working with that. I would also like to, I guess, express my regret to Sasan and Mr. Masuda and also to Mike Hamzy. Regret because I wish that this had gone faster for you. You need an answer. And Mr. Masuda was here, I guess, a couple of weeks ago and he said, he told me, we need an answer now because time is money. And when you're talking about developments, when you're talking about making hot dogs or tacos, time is money and time is always of the essence when you're in business. And so I, I wanted to express my personal regret to you for stringing you along and causing you to endure this process, which shouldn't be this way. To my colleagues, I, I have appreciated your support for continuances and extensions to allow staff to sit with the, the developer, to come up with some kind of compromise that would work best for the health and the lifestyle of this neighborhood. So I do appreciate your votes so far on that. You know, colleagues on the council, as we move forward, and also for, for the developers, you walked into what is really the buzzword. It's a buzzsaw in our community and that's the word infill. And it's something that is discussed here in the halls of City Hall. It's something that's discussed in community centers and churches and, and private homes throughout the city is, is infill. And you happen to apply at this time. And with infill, the city is in the process of trying to decide, is this what we want to do? And is, is this the, the path that we want to take our city down to, to focus on infill? And I think it was Member Capriolio who said once, once before that this particular situation is an actual test case. Because this is where infill, according to the general plan, not the 2035 general plan, but according to the 2025 general plan, infill is called for in this situation. And the density that the builder is bringing to us is called for in this situation. So what we have here is, is a case where the, the people who live immediately across the street and immediately surrounding this potential development are unhappy with the density that's being called for in, in, in the general plan. And so they've turned out, they, the builders are correct. They turned out for the community meeting. They were noticed and they turned out and they've, they've been part of the process. And thank you very much for, for continuing to, to fight and to stand up for, for what you believe in, in your neighborhood and, and appearing on the front page of the Fresno Bee. Very good. And, and so I appreciate your participation, your level of passion on this issue, and I'm proud to continue to stand with you today. So for, for my council colleagues, on, we've already heard this once and we've heard it again, I favor a compromise. My neighbors, my constituents also feel a compromise, or favor a compromise, but unfortunately, for some reason, it, it just can't pencil out. And I guess I just had one question before I wrap this up and, and allow you to debate this issue. And my question could be for, for Bruce or Mike or, or Bruce or anybody. The, the question is, they cannot build two homes. Is that because the city says they must build three or else plan amendments are required? Or is that because they just can't make it pencil? Or is it both?
Councilmember Olivier, it's a combination of both. If the direction is to build two lots or, or two lots, as you suggested, it will require a plan amendment. Obviously, the cost factor is already there.
So the, for you, you can't make money if you build two. So you will pull out of the city if you have to build two. So they, they cannot build two and a, and a compromise is, a compromise is not possible at this point. So I guess today's the day then that we'll have to make a, a decision on this. As for me, I'll be standing with, with the constituents of the, of the 7th District and, and voting no on the project. Thanks. I won't make a motion. Thanks, Council President.
Councilman Brand.
Yeah, this issue really embraces three issues. One is the 2035 general plan. Two are the state mandates we're all faced with, AB 32, SB 375, other state mandates. And the third element is Fresno being business-friendly. This has been debated and for how many years here in the city of Fresno? And if you look at a map of the downtown area and the areas southeast and southwest, because we're going to have a vote here in a, in a few months on a general plan, that's saying roughly about half of the development will be new, new, new homes, half will be in infill. This issue, when you'll see this map, you're going to see little pinpricks in the map. That's all that's available. There's very little land available within the inner city. You just can't take an area with 20 acres and say, it's, it's empty, I'm going to put all these new homes there. This is how it's going to be done, this situation today. And this issue will come up again and again and again until this council is going to have to make the decision on where we're going. And it's not to punish anybody individually, it's just this is as a city, we have goals, we have issues that we have to deal with and some we have to follow whether we like it or not because they're mandated by the state. And one of the critical areas is, is called the housing element of our general plan. That says you have to increase your density, whether you like it or not. And the densities that we're going with are well below what the state wants. You know, we're, you know, putting three houses. By some of the state standards, you'd be putting probably 10 or 20 apartment units there. So it's not going to be easy, but it's something we have to deal with. And I spent six years on the planning commission and roughly six years in this council. And time and time again, I would see, you know, apartments coming in and people would come up and say, I'm all for this and that, but I don't want those apartments in my backyard. And this is, and the same thing is that everybody, and I, I understand, I would probably feel the same way. You want status quo. You have a neighborhood, you live there in many cases, many, many years, and you feel threatened. And I understand the sentiment and how this, this comes across. But, you know, we have to, you know, find solutions. And it's been suggested, you know, do we find a compromise of three houses versus two houses? But in reality, based on the zoning and all the other things I've talked about, three houses is a compromise. Because if I was doing this and building this, I couldn't make any money at three houses. I'd be building six houses. We're talking about 6,000 square foot lots. And almost, most developments now, 60 by 100 or 6,000 square feet, that's considered a medium lot. In fact, I can show you in my district in Copper River, we have three and 4,000 square foot lots with eight-foot driveways. So this, at 6,000 square feet, by today's standards, would not be considered to be overly I know the, there's been, I've read the, you know, the comments, and again, I respect everybody who spoke on this deal and your, and your, where you're coming from. But one of the comments was, developer's going to walk away with bags of money. I can tell you absolutely, by being in the business 30 years and building houses and apartments and the numbers, if they make, I don't think they can make money. He thinks he can. If they make money, it won't be much money. Nobody's going to get, become rich on building three houses. And the economics that my colleague, Mr. Olivier, said about, you know, why are they doing this? Well, you look at, you know, the cost for two lots is $94,000. The average cost for three lots is $63,000. That's a lot of money right there in terms of the, the economies of scale of what you're doing. And realistically, when new developers go out in Copper River and west of 99, they're typically talking about getting 40 acres to have an economy of scale to bring in all the off-site improvements and make it pay for itself because it's, it's strictly a math game. You can divide more into the figure, it's going to be cheaper to build them. But when these houses are completed, they're probably going to be in the $200,000-plus price range. And I'm willing to bet that that price is probably higher than most of the existing houses in that area. Without building three houses or more, what's probably going to happen, if this council majority votes, no, we're not going to do it, then you're going to have a vacant field for probably a number of years. And maybe that's what you want, but that's our mandate. That's our vision for the city is to find, you know, infill. And these are the kind of situations we have that. The people who buy this, this owner has said he's going to sell these homes. To qualify to buy a $200,000 home, you're probably going to have an income of probably 50, 60, 70,000 a year to qualify. I'm willing to bet that's probably higher than a lot of people that currently live in the area. You're going to have homes of probably three bedrooms, two baths, two car, two bath, two car garage. So you're going to have people that park their car in the garage. I don't see, you know, a bunch of cars parked on the street. And you're going to have, in my opinion, the end result is, and I honestly believe this by doing this for so long, I've, I can go back on decisions made 10 years ago and people came, just like you did, and expressed legitimate concerns and the neighborhood was fine. You know, whether it's one house, two houses, three houses. You get one house and one bad tenant or bad owner, they're all going to be bad. You put two or three, it doesn't make any difference. In the end, in my opinion, you will have a better neighborhood. And one of the ironies of this, this, this one particular deal, and I'm going to ask city manager, this, there was an existing house on that corner before it was torn down, correct? Okay. Therefore, and this would qualify for the Build Act that, remember Olivier authored last year, which is to not penalize owners to pay the same fees twice. So I'm, I'm assuming that's going to be applied, which I think was a great idea, by the way. So I understand the concern of the neighbors, but I honestly believe by taking the extra time to review this thing and in and out, I think the right decision is to approve the, the item before us. I think the neighborhood's going to be fine. In fact, I think it'll be better in the end. And we have to make these tough decisions. We have to go forward. We have to implement our vision, all the mandates we have. And in the end, I think it's all going to come out okay. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendations.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Let me ask, let's see. Mike, if you've got a second? You and I met the other day. Totally appreciate that on this issue because I had requested it from the last time we met. Is there any way the city of Fresno could get, help this developer get to two houses instead of three by removing even more fees? What would that look like?
That will likely involve some discussions with our administration to see what fees might be applicable. But right now, as it stands, city's not in a position to waive those types of fees.
You made it sound like we could save them about $9,000.
Well, the $9,000 that I pointed out will apply. That's part of the Build Act that was mentioned earlier. So that will be a credit given to the developer when this project is developed. So that, that will happen.
All right. I really, by the way, I just wanted to say, I liked your, the slide that you provided this time that showed the sidewalks. I don't know how easy that would be to get back up, but it really, it really changed the dynamic from what we were told last time. It's really, there's actually a lot of sidewalks in the neighborhood. I was under the impression, I don't think we had this slide last time, did we?
No, we did not. We went out after the last meeting.
So I was under the impression, maybe it was all more like a county island, which I have a lot of in District 2, where there weren't a lot of sidewalks, but there actually are a lot of sidewalks in the neighborhood. So, all right. So removing fees, we've removed about as much as we can and that really only comes to $9,000. That's not enough to persuade a developer one way or the other. That's not a lot of money in that, in that world. So, all right, cool. Thank you, Mike. I, I just would stick with, and I believe I'm going to be in supportive of this project today, but I can predict that we're going to have many, many, many conversations just like this one. It's been a very difficult conversation. I think this is the third time that we've been meeting on this, just to come to a decision. And, but with the general plan kind of conflicting sometimes with what was already existing in neighborhoods, I think you're going to see a lot of conflict. So I, for me, I'm going to have to look at each individual case, each case individually, not make a blanket, you know, decision. On this case, it's, it's hard for me to think that it's preferable to leave that as a vacant lot in that neighborhood. And when I heard here Councilman Brand's examples, even in the north end of town, we are definitely building homes on lots smaller than this. So it's not like it's, we're creating a compact bunch of tiny lots out there. So anyway, that's it for my comments. We've got a clean screen, a motion and a second. Let's all vote electronically again, gentlemen. So the yes vote is to go with the staff recommendation, which allows for three homes to be built on this property. The no vote is against the staff recommendation. Thank you. Let's vote. All right. Council passed this vote, four to three, with Councilman Baines, Quintero and Olivier voting no. Thank you to everybody who came out for this. So that means we recommended the staff, we approved the staff recommendation, just to clarify. All right. We've got to keep moving here. We're on to the 10 o'clock item, the number one item, which is ID 14-457. Jerry, thanks for your patience. Yeah, come on up, Jerry. We've got to keep moving. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Jerry.
The 10 o'clock item that's before you today, folks, is the, the last in the three-part series for the approval of the, the two non-exclusive roll-off franchises to be added to the list of 20 current non-exclusive roll-off franchises. These are two additional applicants who've applied to be added to that list. And the third session in that approval process is today's hearing to approve the resolution to allow them to be added. Staff's suggestion and recommendation is that we add them as well. And I'm available for any comment or question, should you have it. The two are Mini Dumpsters of Fresno and Catch Environmental. Those are the two franchise haulers who have applied.
All right. Thanks, Jerry. I'm going to go out to the public real quick. Any members of the public like to address this item? Any members of the public like to address this item?
Sticking to this item and the charter of the City of Fresno, what it says in the franchise on this letter that I'm reading, and all the Emmett domains that council then approved to up the whole City of Fresno, and giving a lot of houses away for one dollar, I don't, I feel disgraced. You guys are disgraced. I don't care. On this one, a hearing in accordance with the Fresno City Charter section, do you guys actually really go by the charter? No. Relating to ordinance and adoption of ordinance bills for adoption of the City of Fresno, it doesn't say anything about, and municipal dumpster of the city, non-executive franchise for roll-off collection, it don't say anything about a franchise. It says for the City of Fresno. And I'm not knocking this man's project. I just want you guys to set an example. So whatever decision you made, you already made it to the people and you're supervisor, I feel sorry for you. And then the rest of them, and Mr. Redd, they're gonna pull a recall, because I'm gonna write Washington DC and have them put a hope on the federal government, on all this money, till they get out here and see where their money is going on any project. And I say this man wanted approval, you didn't prove every damn thing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right, then, back up here at council. The screen is clear. Do I have a motion? Do you have a motion? Councilman Shaw, a second, anybody? Second, Councilman Baines. Screen is clear, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Thanks, Jerry. All right. We are on to, I believe, we're gonna do unscheduled communication. Well, oh, oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Barbara. We have people waiting for a different, I forgot one item here. We've got an RDA project here, so I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Councilman Baines. He's our chair of the RDA.
Thanks, Council President, and I wanna thank you, thank the folks that have been waiting for, for a while for that. So the first item we're gonna do is a bill, amendment section four dash six oh five of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to the regulations, communications during competitive procurement process. Greg's gonna present for that.
Good morning, council. Gregory Barfield, Chief of Staff to Councilmember Baines. This proposed amendment would create an exemption to the regulated communication rule that would allow elected officials to participate in the selection committees that are established either by the city manager or the RDA director, or his designees, I should say. The proposed amendment would also clarify that an elected official staff is not prohibited from communicating with proposals. Again, this is a joint city, RDA, and Fresno Revitalization Corp. item. We respectfully ask for your support.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Marlene, do you have anything to add, or can I go out to the public? Okay, we'll go out to the public, and we'll take, receive public comment on this. Then come up to the mic and you can speak on it.
This isn't for unscheduled, this is for the RDA.
No, this is for this accessory thing. I sent a card up there, too. You should have it.
That's okay, go ahead.
I sent it up there. And as do it go out to the public, I qualify either way. Either way, I qualify with a card, which I have, or you come, I'll go out to the public, and I'm the public out here going up for it. So there's no difference. Mr. President.
You're going, Barbara.
Well, I'm waiting on you to say go ahead, because I've been ready to talk. Now, okay. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, Mr. President, enter the board. The city council, which is you all, was the redevelopment agency. The city council was also the redevelopment agency board. My question is, where's all that money that you guys have from being the agency, and who's the boss of that agency, so we can distribute it equal amongst the City of Fresno? Since the City of Fresno, since your charter, and you got bylaws back there, will tell me all of this stuff, I wanna know where's that money from all that tax increments from all seventeen, eighteen redevelopment areas? Where's that money? You all were supposed to have been working for the City of Fresno, because you all was appointed a city council, but by you guys being the Board of Redevelopment Agency, and now the Board of Accessory Office, which is a state of California, where's the money coming from? Where's the money, because they borrowed fifty million dollars from a redevelopment, where's that fifty million dollars for the City of Fresno? We loaned it. And all this process is illegal, it's against the law, and any council person that's been up here from way those many years should be in jail, because there's no thing that you guys should be the redevelopment agency. And the bylaws is in there, go get them, from way back, I got them. Now, where's that, where's the money at from all them seventeen redevelopment areas where they didn't Emmett domain, took people land property, and then they done sold a lot of stuff, money coming in? Where's that money? How'd you guys get to be the redevelopment agency board and the agency? Who notified you guys? Who put your name on that paper when you supposed to be the city council, was elected to be our city council for our government? Now, Mr. Baines up there, president, everybody been a president, Marlene Murphy, who used to be Dan Fishpatrick, all these years. So where's our money for the City of Fresno that has been the backbone with the city council, acting as three or four people, even Fresno Joint Police Finance Authority, that's the ballpark? Where's the money at? You guys are the agency, y'all responsible for all this stuff. Now you tell me, because the FBI gonna wanna know if they ever come up here. That's why Swinton wanna get to Sacramento, I believe, I'm putting my own opinion, because whoever get to be that state controller, and I got the papers that I read from them, special papers that they got back up into the consultants and put, you can't post to read, because if you get to be a controller, then they, they can stop anybody from wanna audit redevelopment. That's all I'm saying. Where's our money? You guys responsible.
Do we have any other comments from the public? All right, thank you. Seen, we'll bring it back to the, to the dais. Do we have, we have a motion from Councilmember John, do you have a second? Second from Councilmember Capriolio, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes six-oh, with Member Olivier absent. The next item will be the approve the selection for the South Stadium RFQ slash RFP. Marlene?
Sure. Thank you. The redevelopment agency and the city jointly issued a request for qualifications and proposal for the South Stadium area, that area along the Fulton between Kern and Inyo. We solicited proposals for mixed use, multi-story development that would include housing and other uses that maximize and leverage that site location. In other words, entertainment, perhaps based in retail. We received three proposals from Grapevine, from Southern California, from the Neuan Company and Frazier Company, and also from Grandville. We had a selection committee comprised of three council members and the mayor and city staff, and they thoroughly reviewed and vetted these proposals in a two-stage, in-depth process. And at the conclusion of that process, the committee selected the Neuan Company and TFS Frazier, or TFS Company. And they recommend that we proceed with a hundred and twenty-day due diligence period with Neuan and TFS to further define the concept, to work out the phases, explore the costs and financing further, and so forth. So that is the item before the council today, approval to formally select and move forward with this due diligence phase. If you have questions, happy to answer. I think you have the information in front of you, as well as the map and the detailed parcels. Thanks.
Thank you, Marlene. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any cards? No? Okay. Who, Barbara, you're up.
Yeah, he's in charge for just, he's in charge for right now, Barbara.
That's right. That's somebody else, because he told me his, I had been vacationed, Mr. Capriolo says roll, 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 that's how I pronounce his name. So what I'm saying, Mr. Capriolo, since you are part of this agency, and you're the city council, don't you feel a little guilty for up here? Especially when you were, and you attorney, and you wasn't elected to be for them or redevelopment, but you're working for them, don't you feel a little guilty of being the redevelopment agency board and all the council persons up here when you wasn't elected, and you attorney? And Mr. Lee Brand and you was on a planning commission for, what, ten, twelve years? With Cynthia Sterling, thirteen years? So y'all planned us in this mess in the first place. My question to you, where's the money? You the agency, go get the bylaws, you the agency board, you the city council, y'all papers listed in there, I've been here for years, and I've been telling you this all the time, and now I got you right here, Marlene Murphy, and she's distributing this money, and we're supposed to be having these accessory meetings, which we don't have no more accessory meetings, where that Von was on it, that supervisor was on, so we can know what's going on. You guys coming here with that revitalization, which is Swinton on, half of you all worked for Swinton anyway, so you gonna vote automatically because you was put here to work for her, and I knows this. So my question is, where's all that money? How much money do we have in accessory agency right now that we can report to the state of California that we got this amount of money? And by you guys got, being the accessory agency, give me a paper where you was elected or be qualified to be the agency of accessory office and the agency of redevelopment and the city council. I wanna know, where's the paperwork to show me that the voters approved you guys to be all three of these? You the attorney. And I wanna know, when is you gonna pay our money? Because City of Fresno got a million dollars after I spoke about it, we got a billion dollars up there now, which wasn't broke in the first place, because we prioritize and we got all these franchise upstairs, enterprise, too. So all our money, all parking recreation, all the businesses, development and utilities, they changed their names around, they all upstairs, and they controlling all of our money, all of our resources, all them brand-new trucks, buses, fire wagons, everything we had out here, police cars, they controlling everything. So why should the voters pay you a salary when you guys don't work for us? You're working for them. Show me a check where they didn't pay you some money for their staff, which is not our staff, to come down here and bring these projects, and you guys approve them. Show me a paperwork that we put you guys in that authority, and you sitting back there with a city council badge on you somewhere, let me know that you work for the people that elected you here. You can't do it. And you by being attorney, and you know this, and all this is against the law. It's fraud? It's conspiracy? I can name a bunch of things I can put on the charges on each one of you all, because it's not true, and you guys steady doing it. You done gave away a whole bunch of houses for a dollar, Emmett domain, people property? That's all I'm saying. Show me the papers, and show me the money.
All right. Ma'am, are you waiting to speak? Come right for it.
Hello. My name is Jill Fields. I live and I'm a homeowner in the Fresno High area, and I just wanted to take this opportunity, since the Fulton corridor issue is on the agenda for today, to bring to your attention that in the Department of Transportation contract regarding the Tiger Grant that the city has signed, it details on page three, the budget and the funding sources, and it says that there is zero dollars and zero percent state funding available for the Fulton Mall project that you had supported. And so...
Let me just clarify.
Pardon me?
I just wanted to clarify that we're not talking about the Fulton, opening of the Fulton Mall to a street.
Well, I know, but it's part of the Fulton corridor, so I think it's legitimate. I just wanted to have an opportunity just to point out that when the mayor did present that proposal and what you voted on, she said and claimed that there was two to three million dollars in state funding as part of the project. And then Lee Brand, fortunately, has just stepped out, but he, you know, authored the amendment that you all supported that required that state funding be available and that zero local dollars would be part of that project. So instead, though, in the DOT contract that the city has signed, it states that there will be three-point-eight million dollars of local funding. And also, in the budget the mayor's proposed, there's over forty million dollars of local funding proposed for Fulton Mall and Fulton Corridor improvement. So we seem to have a contradiction here with the amendment that Councilmember Brand had proposed regarding the requirement that there be two to three million dollars in state funding for that project to go forward, and that there be zero local dollars utilized. So I leave it to you to work that through, but it does seem that the DOT contract does invalidate the council vote on putting a street through the Fulton Mall as part of the Fulton Corridor project. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any further public, public comments relating to the, the South Stadium RFP? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. I don't, I can't see the...
Councilman Brand.
Council, Councilmember Brand?
Well, I was part of the RFP with Member Baines on this item, and, you know, we only, we received three bids, of course. One, in all of our opinions, was basically just a resume, it really wasn't any detail. And of course, the two we received from, from Memet Neuan and from the Grandville group were both very well-done. They were both done by people that have clearly demonstrated their ability to do both large and small projects in a very professional way that, but, and I think we, we had questions, and we came back, and we got answers from both parties. And, you know, the, the ideal situation there, it was, you know, a high-rise, but I think we all felt that we knew the cost factors would be inhibiting that. When, once you go beyond about three, three stories, the structural components become much more expensive to build. And the, this ongoing issue we have downtown is that, you know, the cost of building is, if anything, is more expensive, or at least the same as other parts of the city, but the rent values there, whether it be retail or residential multifamily, simply don't justify the high cost of building, and that's what we're trying to reconcile. But this project, this Berkeley project, as it's being called, in my opinion, is probably one of the most important projects we're gonna see as far as downtown resurgence, and particularly the Fulton Mall, because of its strategic location right next to Chitanchi Park. And as we now are all concerned about what's going on with the Chitanchi tribe and their ability to continue to hopefully, you know, honor the naming rights deal, that we all know that, that Grizzly Stadium has been a struggle from the inception, and I think one of the issues the city has to address, we can't reverse the decision made fourteen years ago, is what can we do to try to make it better for whoever the operator is at that stadium? And this is a significant opportunity for the City of Fresno, because you're developing, what we plan, our vision, was retail, commercial, residential, mixed use, with a lot of entertainment. In other words, we wanna bring people downtown that live down there, come there, and they're right next to a baseball stadium, and hopefully they'll buy a ticket for the baseball team. These things have a significant impact on where things go. And in making our, at least our final, I think it was a consensus of the people on the board, Mr. Capriolio, that we, the entertainment was a key component, and I think we felt that the proposal that was by Mr. Neuan and Mr. Frazier was closely, more closely aligned to, I think, the vision that we had, and Member Baines and Marlene can correct me if I'm wrong. And that's why it was a tough decision we came up in the end to select that group as the group to go forward. And all we're doing at this point in time is simply saying, you, your concept appears to be the best one, there's a lot of work now into actually filling the numbers in, because there's no question that trying to find, you know, the, the total price of this, and most likely it'll be a tax credit finance deal, there's gonna be some gaps that we need to fill in by, you know, one or more, you know, public sources, the grant funding, state or federal grants, RDA funding, et cetera. It's not gonna come from the general fund, but I think that we, you know, this is a great opportunity for us and the City of Fresno to go forward, and once you've seen these conceptual drawings of what this could look like, I think everybody would agree it's a great improvement for the City of Fresno. So with that, I make the motion that we approve the recommendation from the staff report.
Wait, okay, well, listen, so it's my district. Lee makes the motion, Long makes the second. How about this? Would it be, would it be okay if I made the motion, Member Brand? Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much. All right, who's, who's next?
I am. I am.
All right.
All right. For, Memet, do you have a second? Can you come forward? Cool. Yeah, you're, no, you haven't punched in yet. Yet, one more. Hey, Memet, good to see you today.
Good morning.
Well, congratulations on being the recommendation, that's, that's fantastic. Could you, for those of us that haven't spent as much time as Councilman Baines and, and Brand, kinda tell us a little bit about the vision that you have for the south end of the Fulton Mall?
Certainly, members of the council, my name is Memet Neuan, we have been looking at this property, this area, for five years now. This is not something that we recently embarked on. We were working with the redevelopment agency at the time, we were evaluating the project. The, the concept plan that's in the RFP is not unlike the plan that, a plan that we had developed five or six years ago. It is an entertainment venue, it has restaurants, it has mixed use, residential, office, and a variety of uses, and the intent is to try to create something in downtown, on the Fulton Street, that is unlike anywhere else in Fresno. And that's, we're not trying to replicate River Park, we're not trying to replicate the Tower District, we're trying to create a unique district that takes advantage of one of the most beautiful assets that we have, and that's the baseball stadium. I'm a baseball guy, and I'm so excited for our Giants. But, I'd like to just say that we don't take advantage of that asset. And part of our vision is to have residential, and restaurants, and venues, looking into the ballpark, that, that play off the synergy of the baseball park, to try to create more pedestrian activity and vehicular activity for downtown. So, that's our vision. We'll unveil, I don't know when they'll come out, there were some drawings that were put in the RFP, they are concept plans, they're more massing diagrams to illustrate how much square footage we think we can get on the sites, the various areas. And, so, I mean, that, the picture's worth a thousand words at some point, I'm happy to share those with the public, and that's certainly up to you, but that's our vision.
Now, Memet, and thank you for that overview. With the, with Fulton Street being opened in the near future, you know, should we make the final, adopt that final vote? So, your plans have to wait until that street is complete, is that correct? Or are there things you can do while that work is going on, or even prior to that? What is your timeframe?
Our timeframe is, obviously, this is day one. Even, it's not day one, because we still have some issues, and some questions that were in the proposal that we have to answer. But, once we've identified that, we'll start developing the plans and reaching out. I don't see this as a six-month or a one-year start date, this is a long-term project. And to sit here and stand here and give you a date on when we're gonna start, my assumption that there'll be a lot of cars on Fulton Street before we put a shovel in the ground.
Okay, that's kinda what I was getting at. So, the, basically, the progression is, that you would really need the street to be opened first, and then you could begin your projects?
That's correct.
All right.
From a timing standpoint, that's correct. But, it doesn't mean we won't do planning, and marketing, and financing in the interim, because those are, those are year-long processes.
Cool, well, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
And congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Morning. Got a few questions. I'm not being critical, but one of the, the terms I don't like hearing is long-term project. And so, I mean, we can go project after project in the downtown area, and I have a lot of respect for you and Mr. Frasier's work that you do, and, and I really appreciate that, that you're the ones that are being recommended, but still, I don't like the word, the words long-term, and I guess you're, you're kinda stuck in the sense is, is what the city has to do to, to be able to get you folks going, right?
That's correct.
As far, yeah. Okay, and the other, the other part, you know, it just becomes stagnant for me, is, is the word long-term, and I don't know what's, I mean, I, I understand, you know, the position that, that you're caught up in. Now, where would the parking be for, for the, the residential?
In our plan, and it's, again, it was a massing plan, there was a description under each of the buildings, where there would be parking beneath the buildings...
Yes.
To a certain extent, and then we also believe that we need to utilize part of the Gotchoks, the spiral garage.
Okay, and the city owns that, right?
That is correct.
So, you'd have to do some kind of a arrangement with the city regarding that?
There would be, have to be some sort of arrangement made.
Okay.
That would be additional parking. We, we don't wanna underpark the project.
And in the report, it, it says multi-story, mixed-use development, affordable market-rate housing, and then leverage, mixed uses, and leverage and maximize the value of the site, and enhance the stadium destination. Do you have any, like, any, any thoughts in terms of what you'd like to see there? Maybe a little bit more specific, or something like that?
Well, again, I think the diagrams were fairly descriptive. It would be, it would be ground floor, retail, again, taking advantage of Fulton Street, I can, that's the vision for the ground floor.
That's the diagram I got, just so you know.
There were some other pictures that were done, so I don't know where those are.
Okay.
But, the, the ground floor, obviously, is retail, restaurants, entertainment.
Okay.
Above that, would be a combination of residential and office.
Yeah, because that's an attractive corner, I think, to, to even, you know, as a good selling point, to attract more conventions.
Absolutely.
Because it's, you're right around the corner there, and it just becomes a big part of that convention center complex, so. No, I'm glad that you're the recommended one, so I, but I had to ask the question.
Thank you, certainly, no.
Okay.
I'm sixty-three years old, I don't wanna talk in terms of long-term too much, so, I wanna get this done as fast as humanly possible.
Still a teenager, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Neuan.
All right, do we have any other people, Mr. President? All right. Well, listen, I'll make some, thanks, Memet. I'll make some just really brief final comments. I think Councilman Brand, and even, to some extent, Councilmember Cantado, really cover, cover my thoughts. You know, I sat on the, the selection committee, well thought-out project, I'm excited to see it break ground, excited to get into the due diligence process with the development team, and, and really move this forward. I think I completely agree with the sentiment that we need to better utilize the, the asset of the stadium, and I think that this, this moves us in that direction. So, great job, Memet, and I don't see Terrence Frasier here, but please extend congratulations to him as well, for putting together a really well thought-out proposal and concept, and we look forward to moving, moving this project forward. So, with that, I don't see any other council members punched up. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have an announcement to make, from our city attorney concerning closed session.
Yes, unless Council feels otherwise, we can do this closed session next week, and just show it continued next week.
I think we're good with that. So, the only remaining thing then, is unscheduled communication, and then we'll close our meeting. So, Barbara, you turned in a card, so you're up.
Well, so, some running for West Fresno Area Six, for the kids out there, I was on the school board for eight years, I'm gonna vote for myself, I already did. But, I wanna say, I don't want Swinton to go to Sacramento, I'm gonna ask them, the people out here, to vote for that Yi woman, because she been there. And we gotta watch the people that we put in these offices out here, because they haven't done anything for us in the first place, and they give us all these cards, I get in my mailbox, and I wanna see some, that somebody do out here for us. The City of Fresno has been working off of the pimp, off the people was gambling, and when the market was going on, we won two hundred and eighteen million dollars. That's what we've been running the City of Fresno on. All this money right now, we're running, from the enterprise folks up there, and I got some papers at home, and showing me, that our government right now is being run on the consultants. They running our government back there, and that's Swinton, is, we got two or three consultant firms, and they paid like three, four hundred thousand dollars for them people to be back there to run our government. That ain't there, I got the papers, they was in accessory package, what they gave to the accessory office, when I went to the meeting. Some of them Lonzo Smith, and a lot of them different, got them redevelopment a long time, they got confidential papers in them packages, I got them. So, whatever I talk about here, I can back it up. So, I don't think, they say, well, the person get to Sacramento, and that controller's office, they can stop that audit from redevelopment, before somebody else get up there and have it audit, because there's whole processes illegal for redevelopment. All them people laying the money, they done took from them. So, what I wanna say to all the people out here, thank twice who you voting for, make sure you know who you voting for, and I'm voting for that Yi woman up there, because she know what she doing, she been there all the time, we got a lot of people out here voting for her, so let's keep it up. And I wanna put a hope to this revolving door of local government getting out there making promises, and you see what they doing here? Nothing. I'm going home. Oh, I like your hat, you look good, Mr. Steve. Man, that's you, big baby. The Tea Party gonna love you with that hat on, and these kids out here, I'm gonna march with you in your parade.
Have a good weekend, Barbara.
Sending you all, I'm glad to see you all again, and keep up the good work, but you gotta be careful, because the federal government, they put a lot of money in downtown Fresno, and that's why they didn't put the money in downtown Fresno, they sent the money to Manchester. Fresno real name is the town. Marlene Murphy know it, because I send it on some of them papers. They fooling us, they fooling y'all, they ain't fooling me for what for crap. So, you gotta go and find out what's going on, before you put your signature on anything else. Yeah, oh, well, that's good. I thought he was Martin Luther King for a minute up there. Thank you very much, sir. No, but I appreciate you for what you doing, Mr. Brand, Mr. Steve.
All right, thank you Barbara. That concludes our meeting today. We're all done.
I wanna thank, thank this guy, thank him for bringing my cane, because I didn't have it, he came out there and said, Miss son, I saw you walking, and I know this is your cane, and I'm so happy to reunite with my stick.